I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the good public who stands on my mission and to God and to the faithful but liberatory justice for all.
Thank you.
If you are here to make a statement during public comment, we will need to have you fill out a speaker slip with your name and the subject on which you will speak, would like to speak. How many do we have, Claire?
One.
We have one. The speaker slips are where?
In the back.
In the back of the room. So if you will please do that, then we can get, move on to public comment. But before we do, I would like to ask Mr. Villalobos to please state the television coverage.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSPTV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Poak, San Andres Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Reprodcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSPTV, Channel 20. Now for the roll call, Commissioner Godstinker.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner O'Callaghan.
Here.
And Commissioner Idelson.
Here.
And Commissioner Burrows.
Here.
Thank you.
We will now move on, please, to the agenda status report. Ms. Black, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. This morning, we have three standard items on your agenda, including the temporary events, temporary use ordinance, coming back to your commission, and we are ready to move forward with all the items. We do have an intent to waive a public hearing item on that doesn't require any action of your commission, but if there's, when we, when we get to that item on the agenda, you should just ask if there's anybody to speak to that, and if nobody is requesting a hearing, then that hearing would be waived.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to public comment.
Madam Chair, would you like me to review the projection report?
Oh, yes, I would, please, of course.
With the commission?
Thank you.
Okay. So we have the next, next regularly scheduled Montecito Planning Commission hearing would be on August 22nd. As you can see, we don't have any agenda items scheduled for that date, so we may want to just monitor that and see if we can go ahead and cancel that hearing and give your Planning Commission a bit of a break. In September, the next meeting that is scheduled is September 26th. We have two items on the projection report for that day. The first is the Prescott Single Family Dwelling Appeal, and the second is the Agricultural Buffer Ordinance. We definitely want the Planning Commission to meet on September 26th. We are prepared to bring the Agricultural Buffer Ordinance forward to your commission. There's very little impact in Montecito, but nonetheless, you do have a small area that's zoned agriculture, so we believe that the commission should review this in advance of the county planning commission. With respect to the Prescott Appeal, we have been reviewing that project in the context of reviewing staff report material for your commission and have come to the determination that we believe additional environmental review needs to be prepared before that appeal comes before your commission. So we are not prepared to bring that to your September 26th hearing. I know there was discussion about a site visit, and I just suggest we postpone the discussion about a site visit and the hearing until we've completed the environmental review and are ready to come back to your commission on that. So I just didn't want you to think that you're going to have a big item to consider in September. That'll show up on your agenda, and then we'll drop it and reschedule it when we're ready.
All right.
To move forward, because it was continued from the previous hearing to the September 26th hearing.
Yes. Is there any time estimate on when that might come back to us?
I, Madam Chair, I would say earliest would be in early 2013.
All right. So it gives us plenty of time.
It's some time off.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
And that's really all I had to report today. As you can see, we don't have a lot of hearing items projected out into the future, but these items tend to move fairly quickly, and we'll keep you informed as, as items get added.
Thank you so much. We will now move to public comment, which is the time for anyone in attendance to speak.
Does Glenn want to speak?
I'm sorry?
Does Glenn want to speak?
That's.
Oh, there's another one.
Oh, that's after the minutes.
Oh, it is. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. You've got all these. No, no, no.
Right?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. All right. All right. We are ready now to move on to public comment. I have a number of speaker slips. Many of them appear to be in regard to Verizon, which was before this commission last month. I think if I could, please, if we could please have a status report on where Verizon is, the Montecito Verizon across from the church is at this point.
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the Commission, your commission approved that project a couple of months ago, and it was appealed to the Board of Supervisors. The board will be taking up that appeal on August 21st.
Okay. Thank you so much.
In about a month.
And for the record, this commission has no further jurisdiction on this issue. However, we will move on to public comment. Mr. Don Archer, please. Good morning.
I live just up the street, about three houses up from the Verizon building, and I'd like to comment on the power levels that they project. They talk about nine and a half percent of the safe limit, but they don't seem to take into account any multiple reflections. For example, if a direct radiation from the transmitter would be at nine and a half percent of the allowed limit. If you have a rainy day and you get a reflection off the ground, you could get double the voltage. So instead of, let's say, one volt at some little kid's head, you could get two volts. That's four times the power. Now, take into account other reflections. You could have a big moving van or a delivery truck with a metal sidewall and get reflections off the side. I think it's very possible that you could get well over the FCC limit. So I think more analysis needs to be done. That's all.
Thank you so much, sir. Would you please state your name for the record?
Don Archer.
Thank you so much. We will now move on to Martha Kay.
Good morning, Chair Burrow and members of the Commission. My name is Martha Kay, and my sister, Mary Goolsby, and I are co-appellants in the appeal filed opposing the Verizon project. We presently lease our family home on San Angela to a family of five, whose three children all happily attend MUS. It was our tenant, Galidas Yad, who received the notice of the hearing, the special hearing that was held by your commission on May 23rd. As you may recall, there were only four people there that day who spoke at, due to many things, end-of-the-year school activities and people out of town, and as Board Member Phillips asked, "Where are all of the preschool parents?" Do you remember saying something to that effect? I, I wondered myself, where were they? I went home and I contacted the church to ask if they had received notice of the MPC meeting, and I was told that the notice had been placed in the, in the cubby of the trustee of the Childers, and it had not been opened yet. And that solves the mystery of where the parents were that day, but we have managed to mobilize and, and get a lot of the parents that are of the early school here with us this morning. There are presently nine homes located on this quiet cul-de-sac called San Angela Lane, total of 14 children, 18 adults, and that makes a total of 32 people living within 60 to 300 feet of the Verizon proposed relocation project. Directly across East Valley Road from this project, there are more than 60 children enrolled in the early school. Sadly, I must report that several preschool parents have already submitted letters to Director Susie Dubresky, saying that they feel compelled to withdraw their children from next year's enrollment at Elmo. The viability of Elmo Preschool's outreach to the surrounding community, excuse me, for the past 50 years has been placed in real jeopardy as a result of this proposed relocation project. As I went home and, at the meeting, May 23rd, eight weeks ago, nine weeks ago, I took the staff report. I couldn't read it. I was sitting toward the back, and it was kind of darkened, and as I, oh, this is, it looks like this, but this is not that particular staff report, but I, I read it and sat down with it and saw that it was really important for our community, for us to mobilize and try to, to see if in the 10 days allowed for the appeal, if we could gather enough interest of the community. And we discovered that the CUP that was granted by the county back in 1965 to GTE, which is now the Verizon California Building, allowed setback allowances that are not appropriate in the year 2012. With the proposed intensified use of this landline switch station as a cellular base station, Verizon's proposed prefab ground-level equipment shelter on the western boundary and the very real prospect of future cellular carriers adding their own equipment shelters in that area would destroy the quiet neighborhood ambiance of the surrounding homes and, and houses. This proposed Verizon relocated cell facility definitely does not blend into the surrounding semi-rural neighborhood of shops, services, and residents that we've come to call the Village. We believe Verizon Wireless's planned intensification of commercial telecommunications land use that sits immediately adjacent to a quiet residential area should require a 300-foot setback from the nearest property boundary. At present, there are three properties that are less than 90 feet from the Verizon California Incorporated property line, to the north on San Angela Lane, and to the southwest, and to the, and to the southeast, including El Montecito Early School, Elmo Church, and the Montecito Library and Montecito Hardware Store. This residential area on San Angela Lane and the early school are both sensitive receptors as described in Montecito Land Use Document C 2.2.4, which characterizes them as sensitive land use areas. In closing, I'd ask each of the members of the Montecito Planning Commission, as, as we've been told that there's nothing more you can do, but could you carefully reconsider the collective impact this proposed project, accepted on May 23rd, 2012, will have both now and in the future of our community? There must be a more suitable site for Verizon's proposed cell facility relocation at 512 San Angela Lane, and we would surely like to help them find it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. In terms of full disclosure, Ms. Kay, and I did speak on the phone, and I did have a couple of other calls from the community, so we welcome you here. Let's try to keep our comments as brief and to the point as possible, so that each of you will have a chance to speak.
Thank you.
We will now move on to Brett Paeus.
My name is Brett Paeus. I live at 525 San Angela Lane, which is the closest house, I believe, to the Verizon, to the Verizon building and the proposed project. I have four, my wife and I have four children. The youngest is our daughter, who's three years old, and her bedroom is actually, you know, on the street, directly adjacent from the project, which is probably about 60 feet away. My question essentially is why, why here? I, I don't pretend to understand the science, but per the map that was provided by the project's consultant, our location at our property is subject to a 400% increase in exposure over current levels. Obviously, this is, this is concerning. I don't know whether the health threat, you know, is real or not, but perception in this case becomes reality for us and for our neighbors in the sense that the values of our homes will be, will be terribly impacted. You heard earlier that Elmo School is having parents withdraw their children, could be under threat of closing, and if, if this is indeed a possibility, then imagine the impact that that will have on our homes, our largest asset in our case, and probably the same for, for most of our neighbors. If a prospective buyer has learned that a school across the street closed due to fears over these antennas, why would they want their families to live there? Verizon's a huge company, over $100 billion in sales. I don't, do not begrudge the company for being large and successful at all, but to me, this project does not move the needle for the company, for their bottom line, or for their shareholders, and by contrast, the impact on our neighborhood would be crushing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If the commission has any questions about any of the statements before us, please just let me know. Mike Dubresky, please.
My name's Mike Dubresky. I'm a resident of Montecito and live only a few hundred feet from the, from the proposed cell towers that are being talked about at this point on Hosmer Lane. I'm also the president of Executive Educational Consultants. We work with schools all over the country. I guess the one question I would ask is, knowing the, the past history that cell towers have had in Montecito, and knowing that there was a significant concern about a very small 10-watt node that was going to be many, many times the distance away from, from Montecito Union School, and how much ruckus that caused, why Montecito, El Montecito Pres, I'm sorry, El Montecito Early School was not notified by, by Verizon, first of all? The church was, but the school was not. I think that's an important thing to note. The other thing, though, is, is as a board, I would ask you folks to consider why it is that we all agreed that it was, it was detrimental to Montecito Union School, so much so that the, the company that, next G that was talking about putting this node in that put out 10 watts, and as we remember, Montecito Union School, we remember that we have Schoolhouse Road, and this was on the outside of Schoolhouse Road, that this little 10, 10-watt node was going to be put in, and we have the whole upper terrace where the kids have the track, and then we have the lower terrace, which has the soccer field, and then the baseball field, and then we have the parking lot before we ever get to the school. This is much, much, much closer, and it's not 10 watts. We're talking 4,500 watts. And so what I would ask is that the board would reconsider the conditional use permit that was granted and unaltered since the 1960s, and ask itself, you know, is a land use, landline station for GTE exactly the same as a cellular tower being installed? To me, there seems like a significant difference there, and there's a concern about the damage to the public and to property values, and to all the things that I know this planning commission likes to support and, and help encourage. So I would ask you to reconsider this and ask for more research at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have a question, sir. Just a question, please. Mr. Phillips, please.
The, just for the record, the next, next G's decision to take down that site was not directed by the Planning Commission. They had, as you recall, many site opportunities, and they chose not to do it because, I guess, of the, not I guess, I'm sure, the, the concern from the school, but it, but it wasn't directed from this, this group. Would we have liked to have directed them to do that? Probably. But, but we couldn't.
That's, that's exactly my point. You are aware of that, as you've just admitted, and as you said, it was, as you just mentioned right now, you would have liked to have asked them to do that. That was for a 10-watt node, that you would have liked that to happen, and I saw many of you nod your head when he said that. This is for 4,500 watt, nine satellite and, cellular antennas. So if we would want to see that happen, and if everyone was aware of that, as you just admitted, certainly shouldn't we take a look at this a little bit more seriously when we have, have this so close to a preschool and so close to a school where, a church where so many elderly people attend, and is right up against these houses? That's my concern.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Thank you.
And, but we are, we are preempted, and we cannot look at the science, should it meet levels indicated as safe in Washington. Perhaps the community needs measurement of their own, and it's something we're all thinking about, but please understand, there's no one up here that is 100% confident about this science. We just pray that we have it, we're doing it right, and, but there's little we can do other than the visual resource, unless we can get measurement that, that indicates we have a problem, and so far, we haven't seen it.
And I think that's what we're asking for, is more research at this time, and for the board to reconsider this before moving forward and perhaps making a mistake. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Black, did you have a comment?
Madam Chair, I just think it's important for the speakers here today to understand that this matter really is not in the Montecito Planning Commission's jurisdiction any longer. It is on appeal to the board, and they have the opportunity to come to the board on August 21st and provide testimony to the board.
Absolutely, and I do think they understand that. Thank you so much. Susie Dubresky, please.
I'm Susie Dubresky. I'm a resident of Montecito, living very close to the Verizon Tower proposed site, and also the director of El Montecito Early School. Part of my job at the early school is to reassure parents that we do everything in our power to take care of the children, to nurture them, to educate them, and to make sure that they are safe. Well, I, as my husband, Mike, notified you, I was not notified of this project. Had I been notified, I would have been able to get many, many, many of the parents there to that meeting, to share their views and opinions. And so now, as a way of backing up, I do have a lot of parents and children here today, and I have letters from parents that were not able to be here today, and numerous emails. And so I thank you for listening to us today. It's really important that we be heard and be able to share our voice and our opinion on this. And a lot of it, for me, is that certainly the question of health and safety is before us, and there's probably many different opinions in this room, but if we're not sure, if it's even a, an opinion to be stated, why not side on the side of being cautious? Why not err on that side of being cautious and concerned and choose another site? We certainly know that Verizon can do that, and as far as I know, they have not researched other sites in Montecito in which to have the school. And as stated previously, I have many parents that will be withdrawing their children from the school, which is such a shame. We've worked so hard to be where we are, to be at the place in which we are, to be able to establish those relationships. And I believe that part of the Montecito Planning Commission's mission is to be a voice for the community, is to keep Montecito semi-rural, and to be able to provide safety for families and children, and to keep Montecito the sweet place and the wonderful place that it is now. And so we do ask you to reconsider and to do all that is within your power to help us, because, because this would be such a shame if we were to see this happen, and to be able to try to withdraw this after it's in would be an impossibility. And so I, I ask for your, your, truly, your voicing with us and siding with us, please. Thank you, and I have some letters. I will leave with, with Claire. Thank you.
Yes, please leave the letters, and thank you for being here. I would like to ask staff in regard to whether or not the school received notice. How do we decide, how, how's the decision made on who receives notice?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I can't tell you whether or not they received notice, because I didn't bring.
Sure.
The list with me today, but we typically notice properties within 300 feet.
Okay. Thank you so much. Commissioner Idelson, did you have a question? All right. Any question?
Overall.
Oh, Commissioner Overall, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In spite of the fact that's now been said, to my sure uncertain count, three times, I think it warrants being said again, because virtually every speaker has asked us to reconsider. And I hope you all, our commission is sympathetic. We do not have very much discretion in this matter. We are preempted by the federal government and by the State Utilities Commission, among others. I think it's wonderful that you turned out this morning. I hope it's a good dress rehearsal, and I hope you all show up before the Board of Supervisors. We can listen this morning. I suppose if we had questions, we could ask questions of you, but there is nothing that we can do. So as long as you're clear that there's nothing we can do, it's fine to go forward, but what you must do is go before the Board of Supervisors. And if, I just hope that's clear to everybody, because you keep saying you ask us to reconsider. We can't reconsider. It's out of our hands. There wasn't much we could do to begin with, and there's nothing that we can do now except support you in principle.
You stated very well, Commissioner Overall. Thank you. We have two more speakers. Joanna Von Yert, please. Actually, we have two more.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Planning Commission. So I will straighten that out for you right now. Actually, I want you all to know that this is probably a very small portion of the people you will all be prepared to see at the appeal, and I think these people are here just to reiterate to all of you that you made a mistake. I don't think that there was the proper notice given. I don't think there were the proper questions asked by your board. I don't think that there was enough input. I think the timing was almost, I don't know what the right word is, but it, it was definitely skeptical as to when this was presented to you. It was obvious the last week of school. So as a parent, the first I heard of it was in the Montecito Journal, and I have two children that have attended El Montecito Early School. Aside from that fact, I think it's probably clear to all of you, there are 250 students at Mount Carmel, there are over 400 students at Montecito Union, in addition to the 70 or 60-some on students at El Montecito. Laguna Early School, or the Laguna Lower School, has maybe 100. Then Casa Dorinda, over 50. So the elder and the children are the most impacted by this type of situation, and you have all approved a location that is within less than a half a mile to almost 750 of your most vulnerable citizens. Your responsibility is also to protect the citizens of Montecito and to make sure that your planning is done in a careful, well-thought-out manner. I beg your pardon, I don't think that your decision this time was done in a careful, well-thought-out manner. So again, I just want to let you know, we brought some of our children. You need to know the people you're impacting. There, I assume there are far better locations. The current location is nearly two miles away from any of these schools. So now you've approved a location, again, less than half a mile. So the other thing that I would like to point out is that, again, when you present your, whoever, whatever one of you presents to the Board of Supervisors, I'm sure you have it elected already. already, I would like it very clear. I'm going to ask you, because again, we recognize you can't do anything right now. That's crystal clear to me. But I want to make sure that you know, we are putting it on you to explain to the Board of Supervisors that you did not ask Verizon to look at alternative locations and that you maybe did not ask all of the thorough and correct questions you should have asked at that time. So I appreciate your time. I don't mean any disrespect, but this, I really feel, was not done in the correct due process. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments, and thank you for staying involved. We want, Ms. Black, please.
Madam Chair, again, I don't want anybody in this room to have an impression of what the hearing will be like at the Board of Supervisors. As your commission is aware, the planning commissioners do not present to the Board of Supervisors. We present the planning commission's action to the board.
The staff.
The staff presents planning commission's action to the board, and we will do so.
Thank you for that clarification. I think that I will limit public comment to the couple that I have left, and we appreciate you being here. Ronald Hayes, please.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of my grandchildren. And obviously, at this point in time, I have a completely different interpretation of what I'm going to say than what I had walking in the door earlier. I hesitate to accept the statement that there is absolutely nothing you can do at this point as a board. However, there definitely is something you can do as individuals and members of the Montecito community. And that is to take the time to personally contact each member of the planning commission that will be hearing this matter and make it clear to that planning commission the concern that's been expressed to you today by the members of the community. If you can do that, then you at least have gone part of the way to serving those people that you've agreed to serve. If you would also, in addition to that, take the time to reconsider that in the event the planning commission does reverse this and does restrict Verizon from this specific tower, that this matter will be back in front of you in the future. And hopefully, in the future, the turnout that we've had here today will have a positive influence on the decision you may make about any future applications by Verizon. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Just for clarification, we are the last planning commission that will hear this issue. It will now move on to the Board of Supervisors, which is a different body.
Oh, then I amend my statement that you contact personally each member of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Jan Marco Von Yert, please. If I'm not, if I mispronounce your name, please let me know. You don't know how to pronounce that.
My name is Jan Marco Von Yert. Thank you for your time. I understand there's nothing you can do today, but there is a future. My children attend to Elmo, and we have a one-year-old who would attend to Elmo if that cell phone tower from Verizon proposed will not go in effect. I know there will be data concerning the magnetic fields, which those towers of 4,500 watt will give to the community, and I'm sure Verizon has plenty of data saying it is all fine. Regardless, I use this time that hopefully the community can listen and be aware of it, as obviously not everybody got notified about the impact and about the proposed structure. And I hope that anybody who sees today on TV takes its time to think about it. Do you really want our children to be guinea pigs? 50 years from now, we will have different data about cell phones, cell phone usage, and cell phone towers. And there will be a study proving or not proving something we already assumed today or hope not that it will have effect. However, if your children or your grandchildren would attend, would you want them to be put in that place? That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. And we have one more speaker. And I'm sorry, sir, I can't read your name. Is it Said?
Oh, Sarah Eglin.
Sarah Eglin, please. Thank you.
I'm left-handed.
The eyes are not what they used to be.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Eglin. I was on the steering committee, actually, for the preschool when we started our new phase. I'm the children's ministry director at the church. My husband's the music director. All three of our kids have gone through the preschool. Margaret will still be going in the fall. And we live directly behind the church, so we're all right there. My first concern is actually for the business impact on the preschool. I really feel like at this point, if this goes through, we're putting the burden of the public perception on our preschool teachers. They're the ones that are suddenly going to have to explain to all these parents why they should still have their kids here. This is not a public school, so it's not like these parents need to bring their kids or have to be there at that particular school. They can just as easily take them down the road somewhere. With all the blood, sweat, and tears that have gone into building up this preschool, and it's a beautiful preschool and everyone loves it, it's breaking my heart to think about the economic impact based on what the public perception is. And you can, you know, throw out all the numbers and everything and the science, and I know we can't fight that. But we also can't really fight the public perception on that, because everyone knows we really don't have the knowledge that we need to have. So I'm worried about that. I'm also really surprised that the places on top of a roof of a building can be issued separate conditional use permits. To me, it's like issuing someone a marriage certificate and then issuing them two marriage certificates on the side. I don't understand how that can happen when it's all the same building, although I know that apparently it can, because it did. But if there's any way to actually find someone there, I don't, wherever level it is that they can go back and look at the initial one from 1965, I really think that's where they need to go, because I don't understand how, frankly, the initial conditional use permit is being honored at this time. I think, I would love to have you guys join us in demanding that Verizon Wireless fill out what they call an RFR data sheet, which then we can independently verify, because the information and the numbers that we have from Hama and Edison are all very well. But I know Cindy Sage has said that that would be a huge step forward in terms of being able to deal with the public perception from Verizon Wireless, because we would have harder facts that we could independently verify. There's not a lot that we, as a public, can do with that right now without the numbers on that data sheet. And then another thing is, I know we're all here, and you're like, we can't do anything, we can't do anything. But there are other sites on top of that roof that Verizon has already been in discussion and it has been publicly stated that that will be available for rental space as well, which, as far as I can tell by the process, will be coming to you. And if you can understand, or really dig in now to where things could have been, I don't know, gone through more or fought more or whatever, and kept that in mind for whenever these next things come up, I would love you guys forever, I guess that would be. You know, I just, I've, literally, my heart, my soul, in that particular area of the Upper Village of Montecito across the board. So I thank you for your time. My only other thing would be that I am really concerned about the fact that, I know this is happening all over the country, but really Verizon has had the same lease agreement with the Ziliatis for the last, what are, 40 years, something? 47 years. Same rent, same everything. And I think that Verizon Wireless is just taking advantage of the fact that they've got a great deal here. And that's the main point. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? If not, I will express the appreciation of the commission for your staying involved, and we look forward to following your appeal to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for being here. Thank you for caring for our community. And for the record, all of my children attended Elmo, and it was a very good experience for them. Thank you. We will now move on to item eight, the intent to waive a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this issue? Does staff have any comments on this issue? If not, then is it waived, or do we take a vote?
Madam Chair, you don't need to take a vote.
All right. Thank you so much. We will now move on to the planning commissioners' informational reports. Ms. Scott Stinger, any report? All right.
Can you ask the question again?
Is there an informational report? Did you do any information since the last?
Yes, I did. I attended the Montecito Association Land Use Committee meeting this month. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Phillips, please.
I was at, I guess it was the Montecito Association, and I think it was their Board of Directors meeting, perhaps. Oh, is that?
Okay. Mr. Idelson, please.
I attended one of the Board of Directors meetings of the Montecito Association.
Commissioner Overall, please. All right. Then we will move on to the minutes. Consider the minutes of the June 27, 2012, meeting of the planning commission. If those minutes have been reviewed, is there a motion to accept them?
I'd move to accept.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please set the record show that I was not here. I was absent, so I will not be voting on that. And Commissioner Overall as well, will not be voting on that. Moving on to the directors' report, Dr. Russell, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. I'll be very brief. Since your last meeting of the 27th of June, there's been one Board of Supervisors hearing on the 10th of July, and they're now sort of on their summer hiatus, so there won't be anything again until the 14th of August. On the 10th, there were a couple of items of interest. There was, they received a letter that we wrote to the Regional Water Quality Control Board expressing our concerns about proposed new post-construction stormwater regulations, which will affect the design of properties moving forward, because it is going to require that water from relatively smaller storms be retained on site that now is allowed to run off. And that will mean that it will impact not only the application process with modeling and other analytical requirements that don't currently exist, as well as the designs of the project, because it will be, with some of our very clay-like soils, it will require more and more of project sites to be left for infiltration. We have some concerns about how this might affect infill development. There's actually quite a number of concerns, so we expressed those, and the board received that letter. The big item of the day, I think, was the Ash Fee to Trust hearing, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, where the board decided not to appeal the decision. Others certainly have appealed, but the board decided not to appeal the decision to have the 6.9 acres go from fee to trust and become part of the reservation. There was a couple of actions on a large project in the North County, the Rice Ranch Development, which is potentially 700 or more houses, of which only 70 have been constructed. In this downturn, they've been hanging on by their fingernails, and so they looked for some temporary relief from the affordable housing construction requirements, which they asked to be delayed so that they could build some more market-rate houses, and in hopes that our inclusionary housing ordinance, which will be coming to you in the not-too-distant future, might give them some additional relief. And then finally, there was an appeal in District Two of the Salentine, appeal by Salentine of the Browns Project to construct a horse arena, and that we were given direction to bring back findings of denial of that project for the 14th. That was it, but if you have any questions on those items or anything else, I'd be happy to respond.
Any questions? If not, thank you very much. We will now move on to item one of the standard agenda, and ask that be read into the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is on the request of Raymond Appleton, agent for Randall von Wolfswinkel and Doyle Family Investments LP to consider 12 LLA III application filed on April 27, 2012, excuse me, and to determine the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15305A of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you so much. We will now move on to the staff report, please. Mr. Banks.
Good morning, Madam Chair and commissioners. My name is Brian Banks in the Development Review South Division, and I'm staff for this project. The project before you today is actually a quite simple lot line adjustment, and it is located just west of the Biltmore on Channel Drive. The subject project includes 1206 Channel Drive and 1210 Channel Drive. So let me orient you here. This is 1210, and this is 1206, and of course, can't miss the Biltmore. The project is a request to adjust the existing property line between two legal lots of .33 acres, which is parcel one, and .36 acres, which is parcel two, resulting in an adjusted parcel sizes of .35 acres and .34 acres, respectively. The adjustment would transfer approximately 890 square feet or approximately 6% of area from parcel two to parcel one. Parcel two, which is 1206 Channel Drive, would decrease in size from .36, which it is currently, to .34. And parcel one, which again is 1210 Channel Drive, would increase in size from .33 to .35. And at this time, with this lot line adjustment, no development is proposed. I will state that we have received an application for development on 1210. That will come before the commission, hopefully shortly. But the existing lot line adjustment does not propose any development.
Sir, could you tell us which one it will be seeing some project? Is it the one on the right or the one on the left?
Madam Chair, it's parcel one, which is 1210.
Parcel one, okay, thank you.
Right. And I'll show you next how that lot line moves. But again, Madam Chair, the development will be on parcel one. This map does show the existing lot line outlined in red here. You see this little jog here. It was a result of a historic easement for landscaping and driveway purposes. This lot line would simply clean that up and restore the lot line to its historical configuration. And that adjusted lot line is shown here. The project is exempt from SEQA review pursuant to Section 15305A, which allows for minor alterations in land use on parcels of less than 20% slope and not in environmentally As condition, the project is consistent with the county comprehensive plan, including the Montecito Community Plan and the Coastal Land Use Plan. It's also consistent with Chapter 21 subdivision regulations and the Article II zoning requirements, including the Montecito overlay. That does conclude my presentation. Staffs available to answer any questions for you.
Are there any questions from the commission? If not, we will move on now to the applicant. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Yes. Thank you. My name is Raymond Appleton with Permit Planners, and I'm here in behalf of Randall von Wolfswinkel. We have a situation where the parcel that currently owns the easement have always had a hedge, the full length, it's a 12-foot hedge right now, dividing the two parcels and actually making it appear that the easement is actually part of parcel one. Is that, I forget, the number's 1210. I think you saw that in the overlay. You could see the hedge if you looked at the overlay photograph. Brian, can we put that up, please? You can see just to the left of the red line, this big, long hedge on parcel two that runs the full length, separating the easement and basically giving the property... the full length, separating the easement and basically giving the property to Parcel 1. And that's the way it has been basically forever, as long as owners can remember. And it's just a part, a part of the driveway of Parcel 1 that's coming from Channel Drive becomes, goes into that easement, and they're allowed to, and that will always remain. I mean, that's a driveway easement, and that's how it is now. So Parcel 2 makes no use of the property. They've hedged it off many years ago, and Parcel 1 has always made use of the easement area as their driveway and will continue to do so. So there's no change in the visuals or how the use is. It was just an odd development over the years when Channel Drive was narrowed and when other lots up above that were on Hill Drive were shortened, and it just happened. And nobody knows for sure, the surveyor's not for sure, how this little jog that was actually always used for this parcel became part of the real property rather than just an easement. But the owner of Parcel 1 has offered to buy that from Parcel 2, and the owner of Parcel 2, who is selling that easement, is here. Her mother was actually the owner before, and it's held in trust, and they look forward actually to that income to help keep that family ownership of that property.
Mr. Phillips, please.
Does Parcel 1 need that extra square footage to implement their proposed development?
Not at all. Everything that's proposed is if the easement stayed and you didn't approve this. Even the driveway design stays the same. The FARs are fitting this, the setbacks fit this, and if it's given, the proposed development on the Biltmore side has already accepted that the parcel's going to be about seven inches wider in the required setback widths and has already moved that forward. So it's all designed as if the easement stays, but also designed as if it goes away.
Any other further questions from the commission? If not, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We will now move on to public comment. Would anyone here today like to speak to this issue? If not, we will move on back to the commission and for discussion and action on this item.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept. Staff recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Jack, could you move that water bottle? It totally blocks your, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brian, for your work.
We will now move on to the next item, which is the appeal, and I would ask that be read into the record, please. Item 2.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is on the hearing of the request of Jonathan Leach, agent for Deborah Hurst to consider the appeal, case number 12APL8, appeal filed on May 17, 2012, of the decision of the MBAR to grant preliminary approval to case number 10BAR12, and the decision of the director to approve land use permit, case number 10LUP233, and to determine the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15301 and 15303 of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you so much. We will now move to the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm still Brian Banks from the Development Review South Division.
Thanks. We welcome you.
And I am staff for this project as well. The project before you today. Pardon me? We did that. We don't have these labels, too. Here we go. There we go. I think this will be better.
Okay.
Yes. The project before you today is an appeal of the Montecito Board of Architectural Review's preliminary design approval and director's land use permit approval of the Offutt addition pool and cabana. The project is located at 245 Oak Road. Slide here shows the location of the project site. For orientation purposes, we have Hot Springs Road up to the north here. We have Mesa Road down to the south, and Oak Road here. Subject property is located outlined here in red, and for information, the appellant's property is located immediately to the south of the project site. This slide shows the proposed site plan for the project, and again, you see the north arrow here is not in the traditional location, but that's how it lines up. So north in this direction, south in this direction. Oak Road up here, the dotted line shows the edge of the right-of-way there in the property line. Outlined in red here is the area of the proposed single-story addition. The area outlined, or in red here, is the proposed cabana, and then I tried to separate it out for the commission here to also describe the covered porch, which is an attached covered porch to the proposed cabana, and then also a new pool with an integrated spa. And the commission will see in a further slide the proposed landscape plan, but I did want to orient the commission to the proposed development. Slide shows the proposed elevation, north elevation on top. For reference, the Hurst view would be from this direction and from this direction. So if you're standing on the Hurst property looking north, this is the view of the proposed This slide shows the cabana, both in elevation and in plan view, floor plan and roof plan. We can go back to the previous slide if the commission would like to and also see that location in relation to the elevations. So cabana location, covered porch. So you'll see in elevation here, the covered porch, and this would be the elevation in which the Hurst, if you could see it, this is what you would see. The slide shows the proposed landscape plan. I apologize it's not in color, but I did want to point out two features that I think are important for the commission, which is an approximation of the existing pitasporum hedge, and then as part of the proposed landscaping plan, filling in with a proposed pitasporum hedge too, with the intent of creating a complete privacy hedge there. There are also various plantings, landscape plantings here, well, comprehensively throughout the site, but most specifically along the shared property line here with the intent of providing some privacy screening. The project is determined to be exempt from SEQA pursuant to Sections 15301 and 15303, both for the addition and for the proposed construction of the cabana and attached cabana, covered porch and pool as well. The project is consistent with the Montecito Community Plan and the MLUDC. Staff's enumerated the appeal issues in detail in the staff report, but I would like to go through them in an outline form as there may be some questions. The first appeal issue is related to neighborhood compatibility. The appellant contends that the MBAR erred in approving the proposed project because it was not appropriate to the scale of the existing neighborhood. When staff and MBAR reviewed the project, took into account the size of the surrounding neighborhood and that neighborhood essentially of the properties that abut Oak Road, ranging in size from approximately a quarter acre to three acres in size, and are developed with single-family dwellings and the traditional types of accessory structures that go along with them. The total development, which would include single-family dwellings and accessory structures, traditional accessory structures like garages, guesthouse, cabanas, workshops and the like, totaled from 1,300 square feet to approximately 9,800 square feet. The project site is just over a quarter acres in size and is proposed with a total of 3,900 square feet of development, and that would include the attached garage, the cabana, and the cabana's covered porch. So as you could see, with the existing neighborhood ranging from 1,300 to 9,800 square feet of development, and the proposed project at 3,900 square feet of development, it would fall squarely within the range of that neighborhood. The appellant was also concerned about the size, bulk and scale and the adherence to the recommended floor area ratio, or FAR. The appellant contends that the project's size, bulk and scale are incompatible with the neighborhood and exceed the recommended FAR. The dwelling as proposed would be 157 square feet or 6% above the recommended FAR for this parcel size of 2,475 square feet. The total proposed development is, excuse me while I get to that, approximately 2,600 Three dwellings on Oak Road, each on lots of similar size, currently exceed the recommended FAR. Those exceedances range from approximately 2.5% to approximately 9%. And I'll show you, the commission, a table next. The information provided on this table was taken from the county's floor area ratio database. So it was in 2007, we had staff that went through and literally pored through the permits for all properties in Montecito and the microfiche, I believe it was an intern, and endeavored to place all of those square footages, to the extent that they were available in the permit history, into a database. And this FAR database was meant to provide an apples-and-apples comparison for the BAR. The problem previous to that was that applicants would come in and they would say, "My square footage is X," and we would say, "Well, is that net, is that gross? How did this come about?" So in order to provide a more apples-and-apples comparison, the MBAR application was changed to include the data sheets, these two worksheets that are included on each BAR application that the applicant must fill out, that not only specifies the net floor area ratio as defined in the Montecito ordinance, and then the building code gross floor area calculation, so that we have apples and we have oranges and we compare apples and apples at the MBAR. That is the intent. I will say that the database needs to be updated from time to time, so the slide I've prepared here would be with the information that was in the 2008 update of the database and included my research of Oak Road properties to confirm that any development since 2008 was reflected in the table. With that, I'll point out the subject property at 245 Oak Road, the information in the database at approximately 1,900 square feet and recommended at 2,475. And here you can see the properties that exceed the recommended floor area ratio. I'll also point out the parcel sizes here so that you can see the range of properties. They mostly are in the quarter to third acre size, but we do have some outliers, especially up towards Hot Springs, one large parcel at 3 and 1/4 acres approximately. Continuing on with the appeal issues, the appellant also contends that the MBAR did not properly consider their views of the mountains. The MBAR guidelines do contain guidelines, goals and policies that the MBAR should consider when a project is designed, the applicant should consider when a project is designed, and the MBAR should consider when reviewing a project to ensure privacy and minimize view impacts. However, public views of the mountains are not protected by policy. I'm sorry, public views are protected by policy, private views are not. So the MBAR's goal is to consider them but not protect them. The MBAR did consider the appellant's mountain views in their approval of the landscaping that goes along with the project, so we do have a proposed hedge and also some mixed screening, but the intent of that landscape plan was not to block the mountain views. The size of the proposed, or the height of the proposed addition would be approximately 19 feet. However, MBAR did condition their approval to require the overall lowering of the height of the structure from one feet to two feet, so that would result in approximately 18-foot height in order to essentially provide the opportunities for the views and lower the overall mass of the structure as seen from the Hurst property and the street, Oak Road that is. Noise concerns were also, noise was a concern for the appellant as well. The appellant contends that the MBAR did not properly consider the noise impacts on the adjacent properties specifically associated with the pool and the pool equipment. The pool in a residentially zoned parcel is designed in accordance with the ordinance. It does meet the required setbacks. Staff did also review the noise level data for the proposed pool equipment. There are standards that the equipment must adhere to in terms of its output for the pumps and heaters and the like, and the proposed equipment was far under those noise requirements. Additionally, the location of the pool equipment in the rear, towards the rear of the cabana, would put the pool equipment enclosure approximately 50 feet from the appellant's property line. So the location combined with the fact that the proposed pool equipment does not exceed the noise threshold of 65 decibels means that the equipment is consistent with the To continue, the appellant also states that the cabana would be used as a guesthouse. The land use permit was approved for a cabana, and that type of use is specified in the Montecito Land Use Development Code. The MLUDC does allow for approval of a cabana as an accessory used to a swimming pool. The maximum size of a cabana may only be 800 square feet, and the county requires approval of notice to property owner. What that document is, is a document that gets recorded with the property that outlines the limitations of the size, amenities and the use, so that future property owners would also be aware of what those limitations would be. We record them for guesthouse, artist studios, cabanas and the like, and with the specific language in terms of the limitations on wet bars, overnight, the prohibition of overnight stays, leasing, renting and that type of thing. That notice to property owner would be required to be recorded prior to issuance of the land use permit, and that is attached to the staff report as an exhibit for reference. The appellant also contends that the project should require the construction of a sound wall, and that if the commission, if your commission approves the project, that a six-foot solid masonry construction wall should be required along the entire perimeter of the property. That would not be typical of a land use permitted. That would not be typical of a land use condition that staff would require of any other pool. As long as that noise level was consistent, the pool equipment was consistent with the land use development code, we would not have a nexus for construction of a masonry wall along the entire perimeter of the property. That concludes my presentation. I do have some additional photos if the commission is interested to see the existing condition of the site or at least when the project was proposed in two thousand and ten.
Would the commission like to see additional information?
I'd like to see the photos, yeah.
Please.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'll say again, these photos were provided at the initial application, which is two years ago. The site really hasn't changed. There hasn't been obviously any development.
So Mr. Banks, the wall that we're seeing is not, it obviously is a masonry wall on the other side of the property from Ms. Hearst?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gossinger, this would be the view from Oak Road.
Oh, got it. This is, okay, got it, okay.
Yeah, it'll become a little more clear as the next slides come up. So here you'll see the view, the existing view from Oak Road looking towards the parcel. This is that existing pitus form hedge that was shown on my previous slide on the landscaping, and the Hearst property would be immediately here.
Yeah, no, I got it.
This is a view of the backyard. The proposed cabana would be located, I'm guessing here, approximately in this location, and then the pool approximately here. Photographer in this case would be standing really actually close to the extent of the addition, the back of the house. Here's a view looking east from the rear yard, and again somewhat orient the commission, the cabana would be located approximately here, and then the pool here. Again, the Hearst property line is over here, and then the addition would come out here. Some additional views of the property. On the north side of the house, I neglected to mention that as part of the project, there is an addition, there is an existing, I call it an attached carport, I guess, that would be in violation of the code in terms of the setback and the fact that it never obtained any permits, and more importantly that the existing attached garage was illegally converted at some point. So as part of the project, those two violations would be rectified, abated, the carport would be demolished, and the garage, which should have been a two-car garage, would be restored to a two-car garage, and that is included in the project description. View looking north to the opposite neighbor's property, and here is a view of that existing carport right up to that nearly property line that would go away, and essentially this will provide a driveway to guest parking area on the side of the house. Some additional slides for reference.
Just, Ms. Scott Stanger, do you have a question? Okay, please proceed.
That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Ms. Scott Stanger, please.
Yes, Mr. Banks, can you tell me on either the site plan or the landscape plan? It's very difficult for us old folks to read these things, as I've said multiple times, but what is the pave, what is the, and I'm assuming it's paving, between the cabana and the pool? See, there's that, all that white stuff where the little seats are? Is that actually paved or is that proposed to be softscape lawn? What is that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gossinger, it is proposed to be paving, a permeable flagstone type of pavers.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Overall, please.
Mr. Banks, I have several questions on your staff report. On, the first one is in the project description. It's, let's see if I can find it here so I can read it to you exactly. It says there's a net addition of twelve hundred and sixty-one feet to an existing nineteen sixty-three, single-family residence, and that totals out to be thirty-two hundred and twenty-four feet, not the amount that's listed in here. Is that the difference between the gross and the net, or how do you account for that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Overall, it is a little confusing. We included the, let me go back, the existing dwelling has an attached garage. That attached garage at some point in the past was converted to habitable space. So in order to have a true comparison of what exists there on the ground and then what is proposed post-abatement of that garage conversion, we included the existing habitable square footage even though it is a violation. So that number that you're seeing there is the dwelling plus the unauthorized conversion of that garage. Approximately five hundred square feet will go away from that nineteen hundred square foot number, and that's where we total out.
Then it really isn't a net night, a net two thousand, it's a net.
Commissioner, that's correct. It's not a net number.
Okay, I think the project description should be corrected then.
Thank you.
Question related to the zoning violations? I'm interested in knowing when they occurred and who the owner, what the ownership was at the time those violations occurred?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, it's not clear when those violations occurred based on aerial photographs. I suspect it was sometime in the seventies or eighties, but it was a previous owner.
Okay, thank you. In the, it was a little hard to tell from the drawings that we've got, the, when you drive by the site, there are several visible fireplace chimneys, and I couldn't tell from, on the, from the plan whether those that remain are the existing ones or whether there are new fireplaces being added to the, to the project. Maybe that's a better question for.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, I'll answer what I know.
Okay.
I remember at several of the MBAR hearings that the size and the kind of style of the existing chimneys as part of the plans that were proposed at some of those meetings, there had been several meetings, were a concern for some of the MBAR members, and the resulting plan does include an existing one and a new one, but I would rather have the designer comment on specifically on that, how that evolved.
Okay. And then on page eleven of your staff report, there is a, let's see if I can find it here. There is a reference made to the encroachment and the setback and the compensating offset. I didn't quite understand what that meant, so maybe you, somebody could explain that to me.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, it's not an easy one. Essentially, the Montecito Land Use Development Code allows for encroachments within the side and the rear setback, certain, subject to certain criteria. In the case of cabanas and essentially cabanas, guesthouse and artist studios, the ordinance requires that those structures be consistent with the setbacks for a house, for a dwelling, which would mean a twenty-five foot rear yard setback requirement. However, the ordinance also allows for a variable setback and encroachment, and the applicant has availed themselves of this. Essentially, what it means is as long as the design stays fifteen feet or more from the rear property line, it may encroach into the rear setback area provided the area of encroachment is offset, and I'll use air quotes, with a no build area immediately adjacent to that encroachment. I like to think about it as the setback line would basically be modified. So rather than have a rectangular form, the setback basically moves like that. So the encroachment would be consistent with that variable offset allowance and wouldn't trigger a modification or a variance. So the way it's designed would be consistent with that variable setback allowance in the code, and I'll point out that the pool does not require that encroachment offset. It may be located entirely within the rear yard.
Since I had difficulty reading the plans, could you point off, point out to me on the site plan where the off, the offset no build area is?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, absolutely. The encroachment would be this hatched area here, so again, the blue outline and red is the entirety of the cabana, and this encroachment area that's hatched out here equals this offsetting compensation area or no build area here. So this would be the rear setback line, the twenty-five foot standard rear setback line. This would be the encroachment, it's essentially ten feet into that rear setback line, and the balance is that fifteen feet that's required for it to be offset from the, or placed back from the rear property line. So again, my mouse is failing me. This would be the encroachment.
That's clear. You did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Then two last questions at this point. The mailing address for the appellant was something other than two forty-one Oak, and I, if you know, is the appellant a full-time resident at two forty-one Oak, or is that a rental property or?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Overall, I'm not sure what time, oh, do you mean the appellant or the applicant?
The appellant.
The appellant. I'm not sure what amount of time the appellant spends. I am aware that the appellant does have other properties across the country.
Okay, well, perhaps they can answer that question. And then the other one, to the extent that you know, the basis for the concern about the vacation rental, do you know, I mean, was there anything specific that came out that wasn't in your staff report that would give us a clue as to why that concern is there?
Not specifically. I think there is a greater concern of some in the Montecito area about the use of properties for short-term rentals, but in this case, there wasn't a specific concern, at least in terms of how the project was presented to staff and our review of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Ms. Scott Stanger, please.
Yes, Mr. Banks, what is, the overall height, as I understand it now, is eighteen feet up to the ridge of the, whatever that central part of the building is. Is that right?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gossinger, yes, I'll clarify further. The proposed height that is reflected on these slides and on the plans is nineteen feet two inches. However, the MBAR conditioned the project, the MBAR was concerned with, forgive me, I'll step back even further. The design originally came in as a two-story design, and so that generated quite a bit of concern for neighbors. And to the extent that MBAR, at the conceptual stage when they reviewed it, said, "Absolutely, we need a site visit, we need story polls, we need to go, you know, understand this design." So as you see in the staff report, a lot of the process was the struggle of the MBAR with that bulk and the two-story, two-story nature of the project. After those meetings and subsequent redesigns, the project that got approved was a single-story design. However, there were still concerns based on the clear story elements and the need for the height to be at that nineteen foot to ridge height and still allow for a great room kind of architectural concept and the light and things that the applicant needed. So what the MBAR did is said that we could approve the project with the condition that the overall height dropped from one to two feet from the design that was proposed, which would lower the clear story heights as well, resulting in an overall lower height of the project. The applicant would, of course, at that point, still need to return to the MBAR for final consideration, and at that point, the plans would have reflected that overall decrease and provided all the normal details that they would require at final.
Any further questions?
Yes, Mr. I have one.
Please.
Could somebody, it's kind of interesting to me that we now have, what I'm asking is can someone, staff distinguish for me, and I probably, I should know this, but I don't remember it, the distinction between a cabana and a guesthouse. I mean, this is a very small lot. We would not allow a guesthouse. We're allowing a three hundred, close to four hundred square foot cabana, but if you look at the floor plan of the cabana, this looks like a guesthouse. So I mean, and I know that we struggle, we've struggled it over the years, having been on MBAR, I know that there's a struggle with what we see and, but what, how do we distinguish that this now is a permissible structure that really looks like a guesthouse but is not going to be used as a guesthouse because we can't validate as a guesthouse, but we're still going to allow it as a cabana in the setback, in the setback, by the way. So somebody can tell me that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gossinger, it's a fair question because it's not easy.
That's why.
And you're not expected to remember the ordinance, that's what staffs.
I am, but go ahead.
Accessory structures are, Madam Chair and Commissioner, accessory structures are allowed accessory to the principal use of the property, which in this case is one-yone zone, single-family dwelling, so they're allowed. Accessory structures are further broken up into different types or uses that are allowed. What gets confusing is that a guesthouse, a cabana and an artist studio are all eight hundred square feet, they're all limited to sixteen feet in height, and they all require a notice to property owner, they all have the ability to have certain amenities and wet bars and bathrooms and those type of things. So what separates them is the uses that are allowed, not the physical limitation of the structure itself, but the uses. So in the ordinance, we further take accessory structures and then we break them out into these separate types of accessory structures. So we get rid of garages and barns and workshops, and we focus in specifically on these three types of accessory structures. In the inland area of Montecito, a guesthouse may only be on a lot of two acres or greater in size. Cabanas are allowed as long as there's a pool or a sport court. Cabanas may not be slept in, obviously rented least, no kitchens, just as guesthouse would be. The physical structure of the guesthouse and the cabana could look very similar in terms of their size and the amenities, it's the uses that we regulate and that are the difference. So the notice to property owner is the tool that we try to use to memorialize that difference and state, these are the amenities, these are the specific uses that are allowed. Further clarification, that you cannot sleep in a cabana. A cabana is incidental to the use of the pool. The guesthouse you may sleep in, that's its purpose, for up to a hundred and twenty days a year. I hope that helps.
Thank you. It actually does to help remind me of all of that.
Any further questions? If not, we will move on to the appellate. Do you like to make a presentation? Please state your name for the record.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Jonathan Leach. I am the agent for the appellant. I'm also a professional land use planner. I'd like to point out that Kathleen Weinheimer, the attorney for the applicant and the appellant herself, Deborah Hearst, is in the audience. Kathleen is going to make some remarks a little bit later on in my presentation. Deborah is not planning on speaking to the commission unless there are questions for her. I can answer the question about whether Ms. Hearst is a full-time resident at this property. She is not. She has several properties. However, she has never and will never rent this property. Her situation is such that she does not maintain that property for the purposes of investment income, and And she has consideration for those people that are neighboring to her and would never put them through the inconvenience of having somebody rent that domicile. Brian, if I could have you place the site plan back on the screen for me, that would be of great assistance.
Absolutely.
In your packet, I have provided you basically two different submittals. The first was the official appeal, which was accompanied by a letter which discussed several potential inconsistencies that we found between the proposed project and the Land Use Development Code. Subsequent to that submittal, I attended one of the Land Use Committee meetings of the Montecito Association. And in hearing from some representatives on the Land Use Committee, it became clear to me that a focus solely on the Land Use Development Code, solely on the architectural guidelines overlooked the higher purpose, mission of the Montecito Community Plan. The second submittal that I gave to you provides some discussion of this project's in comparison to goals, policies of the Montecito Community Plan. If we look here at the site plan, a couple of things that were, I would say, sort of glossed over. At the top of the site plan, the existing garage area that was converted to a bedroom, that garage actually started life in the 20s as a standalone garage for another estate before Oak Road was in existence. When Oak Road came in in the 40s, that garage happened to sit essentially on the curb face for Oak Road. Probably should have been torn down at that point in time, but it wasn't. Permits were later issued to add about the same-sized residence at the back of the garage and later an expansion. So the property already benefits from a legal non-conforming encroachment of the, almost the entire garage into the front yard setback. This request then is asking for you to approve the cabana structure, which encroaches into the rear setback for the property. So what you're doing is establishing nearly a continuous development footprint for the northern side of that property. There's only the gap, which is in charcoal there, for lack of a better color description, which is going to be left in open space. The ability to allow an encroachment into the rear yard by virtue of having other non-developable space, that's intended to provide some relief to the immediate neighbor. If you're going to allow a portion of the building to encroach in, you have to have another portion of the yard that is permanently left open so that they do not have the situation of that entire development being right on top of them. In this site plan, what you have as that permanent undeveloped open space is patio, patio which is located between the cabana and the pool. The potential for that patio to be used intensively by people that are using the pool or the cabana is basically a given. So the relief that you're supposedly providing the neighbor for not having intense uses right on top of them is not achieved by that site plan, we don't believe. If you go back to the site plan again for me, Brian. And then last but not least, we have the pool itself. So that what you're looking at is a site plan that asks the neighbors to absorb, to tolerate, the intensity on this property about pushing the development out to the borders. We're creating a lovely exterior living space in the middle of this lot, and we're asking the neighbors, hey, do you mind if we put a building on the setback line or within the setback line? So from a planning perspective, this is not a site plan that we feel really respects the integrity of the neighborhood. You will hear, as we heard at MBAR, that when the property owner purchased this property, he thought he was buying a legal three-bedroom residence. It is not a three-bedroom residence. It's a two-bedroom residence with one illegally converted bedroom. There is the netting out of that 500 square feet, which is the existing garage in all the calculations. But rather than adding 500 square feet to the net of 1,400 square feet, the applicant is asking for an addition of 1,200 square feet to the existing net of 1,400 square feet, essentially doubling the size of the house. Asking to be made whole by recapturing a bedroom is one thing. Expanding the house beyond the guideline is, we feel, quite another. At MBAR, the option of limiting the expansion to 50%, which would be 720 square feet, was brought to the attention of the landowner as a means of avoiding the need for a guest parking space. He declined to follow that suggestion. So what we have is a new guest parking space, which is along the north side of the house, another challenge in terms of the limited space that's available on this site to do site planning. With respect to the Montecito Community Plan, I would take exception to the finding in the staff report that the project is completely consistent with the Montecito Community Plan. I don't believe that that is the case. And with respect to mountain views, while there is not a policy which requires protection of mountain views, there is a goal. That goal is Goal LM1, which says, "In order to protect the semi-rural quality of life, encourage excellence in architectural and landscape design, promote area-wide and neighborhood compatibility, protect residential privacy, public views, and, to the maximum extent feasible, private use of the mountains." That's a goal in the Montecito Community Plan, which this project does not respect. The overall mission, in fact, of the Montecito Community Plan, as it should be, is to preserve and to protect the unique character of Montecito. The designer for this project, at one point in front of MBAR, made the statement that this is a neighborhood in transition, and this project represents the new character of the neighborhood. That flies completely in the face of the primary mission of the community plan, to preserve and protect. We should not be encouraging people to make change in their neighborhoods. We should be encouraging them to preserve and protect. Montecito Community Plan has an action to establish architectural guidelines in order to preserve and protect that community character. The project, as you've heard, is 6% over those guidelines. We have stated again and again at MBAR that we would like to see this project and every project respect those guidelines. We believe that those projects in the neighborhood that have been brought out as examples of being over the guideline are poor examples. It is by not following the guidelines, by allowing small increases over that, that you set the precedent for the next project to come along and ask for exactly the same thing. We believe that if you allow each project to have a small amount over the guidelines, all of a sudden, you've lost that unique character that you are trying to protect in the community. Also, those FAR guidelines do not consider development in total. They are aimed at only the primary structure. They exclude accessory structures and garages. So we have the house itself that is over by 6%. We have the two-car garage. We have a cabana. We have a covered loggia. Put those all together, and you wind up with 33% of this lot is covered by structural development, which we believe on this size lot is inappropriate. And the footnote to Table 1 of the FAR guidelines that hardly anybody ever reads states that on particularly small lots, using this guideline may be inappropriate. And we believe that is definitely the case with this lot. In terms of policy inconsistencies, the second submittal that I provided to you discusses a number of policies. We believe that there are a minimum of seven policies in the Montecito Community Plan, not goals, not actions, but policies with which this project is potentially inconsistent. That, to us, is a clear indicator that this project needs to be denied. Our request, in fact, is along those lines. But before I do that wrap-up, I'm going to invite Kathleen to come up and speak to you about the rental, vacation rental issue that was brought up by your commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Kathleen Weinheimer. I'm here representing Deborah Hurst and wanted to just take a few moments of your time to talk with you about one specific issue that has concerned us. Mr. Leach has described for you the many inconsistencies that we feel are inherent in this project, but I'd like to talk briefly about another concern that my client has about a broader policy question and problem in Montecito, and that's the growing number of vacation rental properties in the area. I believe you've all been provided with a copy of a website called Vacations in Paradise or some such that lists some 19 properties in Montecito that are used for vacation rentals, either on a week basis or a weekend basis, some up to $10,000 a week. So it's a profitable little business for many who engage in it. Commissioner, overall, raised the question earlier about why we were concerned about this with regard to this specific property. And I think that came about as something that was brought up in one of the earlier hearings. And that was that we had been told that part of the applicant's business in Canada is a vacation rental business. Consequently, we were very concerned that this property would be used in such a manner as well. While there are some locations that are certainly appropriate for vacation rental use, such as ski resorts or places like that, perhaps places in the desert, the conversion of single-family homes to such commercial use undercuts the residential character of the neighborhoods and really runs counter to many of the goals and policies in the Montecito Community Plan and in the existing zoning ordinance. We discussed our concern that the applicant's property was intended for such a use with the Montecito Association Land Use Committee meeting. At that time, committee member John Watson, a well-known local architect, pointed out that the use of a residence for such a commercial operation was in violation not only of the zoning ordinance, but also of many building codes and Title 24. Many of the requirements for commercial use, as you know, deal with things such as accessibility requirements, fire safety requirements, exiting requirements, parking requirements, and the like, not to mention the payment of transient occupancy taxes. Change of use from a residence to a commercial operation requires a permit so that these very items can be addressed. To allow a de facto use of a residence as a commercial operation not only prejudices the people who go through the process and make the appropriate changes, it unnecessarily places those occupying the facility at a risk, as many of these requirements are indeed life safety issues. In my June 29th letter to you, which is in your packet, I outlined the authority for the imposition of a condition prohibiting vacation rental use. Briefly stated, there must be a nexus or a rational relationship between the applicant's request and the proposed condition. In this case, we believe that the extensive development that's been described for you by Mr. Leach clearly provides that nexus and that the imposition of a condition which limits the use of the property to that allowed by the zoning ordinance is appropriate. To even implicitly encourage the use of such a small parcel, one developed with a house, garage, pool, cabana, and covered loggia as a vacation rental would place an undue burden on the neighborhood with the constant turnover of guests, cars, housekeepers, maintenance personnel, et cetera. Further, vacationers have no vested interest in the community and are unlikely to take the neighboring property owners into consideration when using the pool, partying, coming and going at all hours, and making general noise disruptions that might not otherwise be the case with a permanent renter or an owner in residence. When we originally suggested that such a condition be applied to this project via a notice to property owners similar to what is being applied to the cabana, staff objected stating that there was no provision in the zoning ordinance prohibiting vacation rental use. As described in Mr. Leach's original appeal letter, a limitation such as this merely prevents the operation of a lodging facility in a single-family zone. Table 2.7 of Section 35423O30, Allowed Land Uses and Permit Requirements for Residential Zones, does not include a single entry for lodging uses, whereas Table 12, Commercial Uses, identifies hotels, motels, guest ranches, and the like. Clearly, the absence of such a list in the single-family zone is indicative of the intent to reserve the single-family zone for just that, single-family use. Apparently, this lack of specificity resulted in a successful challenge to an attempt to enforce against an operator of vacation rental uses sometime in the past, causing staff to conclude that such a restriction was unenforceable. While we disagree with this conclusion, this isn't the case of simply applying the zoning ordinance to an existing operator. This is the case of imposing a condition on a discretionary application where you, as the decision-makers, have far greater latitude to craft a condition that is appropriate to a given circumstance. Absent an abuse of discretion or the imposition of a condition which is arbitrary or compresious, an appropriately crafted condition such as this, with a sound nexus between the requested action and the condition, will be both appropriate and defensible. In this case, we're asking that a second notice to property owners be recorded, which states that, quote, "The property shall not be leased or rented for a period of less than 30 consecutive days in duration. Vacation or short-term rentals are prohibited." The authority for such a restriction is implicit in the zoning ordinance, and the imposition of such a condition is rationally related to the requested approval establishing the required nexus. As such, the proposed notice to property owners does nothing more than restate the current restrictions in the single-family zone and alert any future buyer to the enforcement of the single-family restrictions. Without such limitations, we believe that the neighborhoods of Montecito will continue to be used for these kinds of intrusive commercial operations, whether they be vacation rentals, event centers, vacation retreats, bed-and-breakfast inns, Kardashian weddings, or what have you.
Thank you so much. Would you please sum up for us?
Certainly. We ask you to take the first step towards stopping this intrusion into the existing single-family neighborhoods by imposing the requested condition. With that, I would ask Mr. Leach to make a few concluding comments, and we'll conclude our presentation.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions at the Speaker? Thank you.
So in closing, our request to you is to uphold our appeal, denying the project, allowing the applicant, if they are interested, to restart the design process to bring back something that would be consistent with the adopted policies of the Montecito Community Plan and the Development Code, and provide clear direction that in so doing, the elevated clear story element, in our opinion, should be eliminated, does not have a necessity in the project design and blocks mountain views, that the main house be reduced by a minimum of 6% so that it clearly is in compliance with the recommended maximum floor area, that the size of the cabana be reduced so that there is no encroachment into the rear yard setback, and also would result in its far lower likelihood of being used as a guest house. And then finally, to include a notice to property owner that Kathleen Weinheimer has described for you. If you have any questions at all, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Commissioner, overall, please.
My questions actually go to, have two different sets of them. One set of questions for Ms. Weinheimer and a couple for you. You said in terms of the incompatibility with the Montecito Community Plan that you'd identified seven specific areas. If you articulated those, I missed them.
I did not in this presentation. It is in the letter, the second letter that I submitted to you dated July 17th in your packet.
All right. If we take a break here this morning, I'll reread that then. Okay.
May 17th was the day?
No, July 17th.
Madam Chair, subsequent to the filing of the appeal, we received two letters, one June 29th, 2012, from Kathleen Weinheimer.
Yes.
And one dated July 17th, 2012, from Mr. Leach of Dudeck. So those should have been provided to the Commission, I believe, during your material.
I will endeavor to reread it. You made, in two occasions, you seem to make two contradictory statements, so I'd like you to address it. You talked about the history of the garage and clearly... You talked about the history of the garage, and clearly, the history of the garage and what ensued from that was a pretty clear indication that the neighborhood was in the process of changing. Granted, it was in the 20s, or shortly thereafter, but you had an evolution of the neighborhood. And then later on, you talked about the community plan, and that we shouldn't be supporting transitions in neighborhoods, whatever, however you define that transition. Those two things that you cited seemed to me to be antithetical. I wonder how you resolve those.
Yeah, certainly, the original garage had a relationship and a location that made sense from the standpoint of the residents that it served. Horseless carriage, keep it as far away from you as possible, probably have a chauffeur's quarter nearby as well, but not proximate to your living area. As a result of that, that garage was placed way at the back, not near any existing road. So I draw the distinction between when the Montecito Community Plan was adopted in 2002, I think it was, or earlier.
Nineteen ninety-two.
Yes.
Ninety-two.
Yes. Versus when that roadway went in, and when there were no clear guidelines for the intent of planning in the community. So at this point in time, describing a neighborhood in transition, I feel, is counter to what the mission of the community plan stated in the pamphlet.
Okay, we won't get into a debate whether or not, post-92, anything should change or not. So at least I understand where you're coming from. And the other set of questions I have are actually for Ms. Weinheimer, if she'd like to come back up.
Good morning.
I'm concerned about this vacation thing, because I think it strikes a note, probably resonates with a number of people, as a legitimate concern and a direction for the community, maybe that we don't want to see it go. But I have a number of concerns related to it. And I think the first actually starts with, why is this a concern for this specific property, as contrasted to the community as a whole? If I'm understanding you correctly, you would be asking us to take an action and attach a legend to this particular property that doesn't apply to others, might be viewed as discriminatory. And I'm not saying I'm unwilling to do that, but I do want to understand what the basis of this is, if there's a specific thing that you can tie this to, or if this is just a general angst on the part of your client.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Overall, in response, I think there are several points. One, I would certainly agree that there is an overall concern about a trend that seems to be developing in, not only in Montecito, but throughout many of the more desirable parts of Santa Barbara County, where there are short-term rentals, commercial operations, if you will, taking place either as vacation rentals or as event centers and the like. I know you have on your agenda today the discussion of the event usage of private residences. And vacation rentals may well be something that also comes before your commission as a future ordinance amendment. With regard to the specifics of this, however, our concerns are twofold. One was that we had been informed that, in fact, this owner did operate vacation rentals. So we had reason to believe that this particular property would also be so operated. The second concern was related to the extent of the development on a very small lot.
Okay, let's just stick to the vacation rental. That's the only thing I'm inquiring.
No, but it is tied to the fact that we believe that there is, the extent of the development leads directly to the fact that it makes a more attractive vacation rental, if indeed it has the cabana/guest house by any name.
Let's stick to the question of the vacation rental, because it's my understanding that the owner of this property, who lives in Canada, came to a MBAR hearing and said that it was his clear intent to, when he finishes teaching, which in a couple of years, to retire here, and it would be his permanent residence. Now, did anyone, did you, did Mr. Leach, did Ms. Hurst, did anybody talk to this man and ask him specifically whether or not he intended to use this as a vacation rental?
I don't know. I did not speak with him. I don't know if others did. Our concern is for that interim period, quite frankly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, we'll take a short break and come back into session in ten minutes, please. If not, we will move then toward the applicant. Would the applicant like to make a presentation? Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is John Offutt, and I'm the owner of the property. Thank you very much for hearing my words today. So I wanted to start by introducing myself. I was born in Omaha, Nebraska. I'm 51 years old. I'm married a Canadian, and we live in Toronto. We've been married for 27 years. My wife is a lawyer. We have two boys that are 19 and 21 years old. I was in real estate for 19 years, and about eight years ago, I transitioned over to teaching. So I'm an elementary school teacher now. I've been teaching kindergarten in a high-needs inner-city school in Toronto for the last five years. Before that, I went to Rice University in Houston, and then I went to Claremont Graduate School, where I got an MBA. And it was when I was in Claremont Graduate School that I had a chance to visit Santa Barbara, and at that time, I fell in love with Santa Barbara immediately. And it's always been my dream since then to be able to live in Santa Barbara. So all this is around the fact that we want to have a retirement home in Santa Barbara. And a few years ago, with the market correction that existed, et cetera, I thought this was a great opportunity for us to look for a home that we could buy for our future retirement home. My wife and I are still a few years from retirement. My wife is a lawyer and has her own practice, and we wanted to take this opportunity between when we bought the property and when we'll finally move in, to make the plans and improve the property to where it is. We chose Oak Road because it is close to the Lower Village and a quick run to the beach. We appreciate the character and the quality of the neighborhood, with a broad range of modest to fabulous homes with character on the street. The street is quiet and intimate, and has a really nice neighborhood feel, which we appreciate. We chose a smaller lot because we are active people and don't want or need a large lot that we have to maintain and, you know, upkeep. And we wanted to live in a neighborhood with neighbors, meaning that you have neighbors that you can say hello to, et cetera. That's what we live in, in Toronto. 245 Oak Road needs a lot of work. It's quite a modest property, and over time, obviously, I hear the garage was built in the 20s, other parts of the house were built at other times, but it's a very modest home, and it's relatively tired. But it has nice character and potential, and it was the only home that I could afford in the area at the time. In Toronto, we live right down in the city, and we have a lot of a similar size to Oak Road with a pool. We've lived there for 20 years, and we have a great relationship with all of our neighbors. We have never had an issue with our pool or privacy with any of those neighbors, and we are considerate of others. That is what good neighbors do. Okay. I was introduced to Sophie Calvin and have been impressed with her abilities, talent, and experience. She was able to draw up the plans with the second-floor master and the pool and cabana that I wanted, stating that, in her experience, the plans were reasonable and achievable. I was not aware that a second story would be such an issue, as there are many two-story homes on Oak Road, and my property has two-story homes located to the north, to the east, and the west sides of my property. So only Ms. Hurst's house is the only bungalow surrounding my property. I didn't think the pool would be an issue, as from satellite photos of the area, there are quite a few pools on the block and in the neighborhood. Sophie assured me that people in Santa Barbara have a right to a pool with a cabana to serve it. The architectural review has been disconcerting for me. We've gone through many rounds, and it started off as Sophie dropping off the plans to the neighbors and asking them for their input before the first meeting. The neighbors to the north did contact Sophie and expressed their concern with the second-story privacy and the second-floor deck. They said that they had done a second-story addition recently on their house, and that any deck should be integrated into the roof. This seemed reasonable to me, because when they went and got their application in 2005, that was what they agreed to and what they went on to do. So we addressed their concerns in the next review. However, at the second review at the MBAR, Ms. Hurst's agent, Ms. Stahl, showed up for Ms. Hurst, and she spoke on Ms. Hurst's behalf, saying that she was concerned in regards to the privacy issues of the second floor as well. So at that point, again, seemed reasonable to me, and with Sophie's comments and the board's comments, or the MBAR's comments, we further revised the property. So at the next review, we provided more landscape screening for Ms. Hurst, we set back the house further away from her house, we set back the second floor, we eliminated any windows on the second story that would give any sort of view to the south, we limited the size of the second-story rear windows as well, and we reduced the size of the cabana. By the next review, Ms. Stahl and Ms. Hurst had politicized the process. Ms. Stahl wrote misleading letters in the Montecito and Santa Barbara papers, of which I received copies in the email, claiming I was a Canadian, building a McMansion as a vacation rental. None of these things had I stated. All of them are obviously based on an opinion. But what we have here is a 2,500-square-foot house. By anyone's interpretation, I believe, 2,500 square feet is not a mansion. A McMansion would say that it's something that I bought out of a catalog or through a drive-thru. This is not the case. I've hired a very qualified architect, and we've done a bunch of plans, and we've tried to integrate them and be sympathetic to the neighborhood. And nowhere, nowhere along this, have I ever stated that I'm using this as a vacation rental. I do want to set the record straight. I am an American, and I do not plan on using this home as a vacation rental. I think Ms. Hurst and Ms. Stahl's misinformation in regards to this simply has to do with the fact that they looked back on, maybe Googled, my name. I was a very successful real estate person in Toronto for a number of years, and during that time, I had a construction company, I developed properties, I had rental properties that were long-term rentals, and I developed vacation properties for other people. The newspaper articles, and that was featured in CBC as well, had to do with the fact that I gave up that very lucrative career to become a teacher. So that was my former life. Yes, at that time, I did have rental properties. I'm a teacher now, okay? I'm a teacher, who I plan on teaching another few years, and then I plan on retiring. So I'm not in the vacation rental business, and I do not have any vacation rentals, okay? Ms. Stahl and Ms. Hurst visited the neighbors, many of the neighbors, and asked them to oppose my plans, making unfounded assertions and misleading statements about me and our plans. They even visited my tenants, who are currently in my house, and asked them to oppose my plans. Ms. Hurst and Ms. Stahl have never spoken to me, never spoken to me. They have never asked me any questions, or asked me to clarify my intentions or use of the property, neither has their planner or their lawyer. Ms. Hurst hired a planner to submit a letter to the board with a long and comprehensive list of demands and issues that were never raised before, and this was in the third hearing. At the next meeting, I'm told it was a bit of a circus, Ms. Hurst spoke for the first time, and at that meeting, the board gave further guidance indicating they would approve it if we offset the second story to the south and the roof would fall back. I came out to Santa Barbara at that point to assess the situation, meet with neighbors, and hear their concerns, to hopefully resolve what had become a stalemate. Sophie and I met with Jamie Brown from the Neighborhood Association, Martha Siegel from the Montecito Association, and the Burkeholts, who are the neighbors to the north. Ms. Hurst and Ms. Stahl did not wish to attend. Ms. Hurst supposedly had left that day, but my tenant had seen her that morning, and Ms. Stahl said she couldn't attend because she couldn't speak for Mrs. Hurst. If Ms. Stahl can't speak for Ms. Hurst, then who was she speaking on behalf of, to the newspapers, my neighbors, my tenants, the board? I don't understand.
Sir, might I suggest, we really appreciate your statement. If you could give us information about your project, as opposed to the interaction with the...
I'm just trying to give you a history, because we looked to the MBAR on five or six occasions prior to actually getting approval.
Absolutely.
So, okay, I'll kind of cut to the chase here.
Thank you.
Okay, so after that meeting, we did resolve, we were specifically told by the Neighborhood Association and by the neighbors to the north, if we went from a two-story down to a single-story, then they would be happy, and they would go away and feel that I'd really addressed their concerns. So I sat down with Sophie at that point, and we said, okay, we will make it a one-story house. And that's what we have today, is a one-story house with a clear story down the middle so that we can get light into the middle of the house, and my architect will explain that. I attended the final hearing to state my case, and Ms. Hurst's planner, Ms. Stahl, and the Burkeholts stated theirs. The review board acknowledged all the work we had done to appease the neighbors and granted my application. I have still not heard a word from Ms. Hurst, no communication. She prefers to speak through her planner, lawyer, or real estate agent, and here we are again, okay? But the issue hasn't changed. Everything that I was granted before is before you today, including some things that my architect will show you in regards to the reduction in the height, as well as a further reduction in the square footage. My plan is reasonable. In fact, I've reduced the size of the house further to prove my reasonableness. It has made, we have made significant accommodations to the neighbors, to the point of which we only seem to have one neighbor here, and all the others are quite happy. It is compatible and in-character and in-quality with the neighborhood in the area, okay? I don't know what Ms. Hurst's motive is to remain so inflexible and continue to raise her demands even further, but this only reminds me of a story that I read to my kindergartners. You know the one titled, "If You Give a Mouse a Cookie"? The kids live like how, when you give a mouse a cookie, then he asks for a glass of milk, then he asks for a napkin, then a broom, then on and on, until he asks at the end for another cookie. It is a funny story that captures the kid's imagination. Well, in this case, I feel Ms. Hurst is the proverbial mouse. We gave her a cookie, then a glass of milk, then a napkin, then a broom, et cetera. I'm here because I need to know when this story is going to end.
Yes.
So please quash this appeal so that my wife and I can begin to enjoy our home.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your patience.
Do you have additional speakers?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Sophie Calvin. I'm a residential designer and was fortunate enough to be able to work with the office. I'll put that there. Where do I go? So this is up and down? In my presentation, I believe the Commissioners all have a reproduced copy of what I'm going to represent on the screen. This first image that I wanted to point out was the existing, is the existing current configuration of the floor plan. I've clouded the area that is what we will convert back to a two-car garage, but when my client purchased his house, he thought he was buying a three-bedroom, three-bath And the carport, we knew that he wanted to convert that space back to garage so he could take off parking on-street and have his car secure, and we also knew that the carport was in the sideyard setback and that that would be removed. Now I'm just briefly going to take you around the neighborhood. This is the house at the corner of Mesa Road and Oak Road, so south of the property, two-story. Just wanted to point out that this house is a three-bedroom, three-bath house, and it's 288 square feet over guidelines, or 12%. This is another house, a larger property, so I'm not giving you guidelines as to, because the parcel is not of equal size or relative to what our parcel is. Now we're traveling up or north Oak Road. This is 233 Oak Road, which is a four-bedroom, four-bath house with 273 square feet over guidelines, or 11%. This project was in front of the Board of, Montecito Planning, Board of Architectural Review in 2004. It was proposed with these additions of a two-story, and I believe also garage addition at that time. And this house sits just south of the Hurst residence. So now this is looking a little bit more to the north. You see in the right-hand side of that page, the beginning of the white stucco wall, which is the Hurst property. This is the front view of the Hurst property. The Hurst property is a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bedroom house. It is 216 square feet under guidelines. It was built in 1960, and I believe there was a permit a few years back that... It was built in 1960, and I believe there was a permit a few years back that Mrs. Hurst or a previous owner, I believe it was Hurst, just did a remodel of upgrading doors and windows. This is a little bit more of a street view. You can see the Hurst white stucco wall also kind of continues into my client's stucco wall. And then here is the front of the Offit project. The chimney that you see to the left of that image is a chimney that would remain. And actually, we're trying to keep that, we would, in our current design, we are proposing to keep the little gable roof that you see, a little bit of a ridge on that right side. The chimney to the right of the page is actually currently in the dining room, and that would be removed. Want to point out one thing. You see to the right or between, just to the left of where that scooter is, there is a, the stucco wall between that and the wrought iron fence. That would be opened up and that would be the entrance to a two-car garage. The garage doors would be located there. There is some real charm and character to the detailing of that existing garage and the huge bougainvillea that wraps around the parapet and over that front trellis, which we are trying to maintain. To the right of that scooter, you see a, it looks like a bifold door. That is the carport and that would be removed. And actually, we're proposing to put a fence, a gate, a vehicle gate 20 feet further back from that, so creating a little bit more of a relief from that whole flat structure that's currently there. So when I first met with the office, their intent was to convert that two-car garage. It meant a loss of a three-bedroom, the third bedroom. So we knew that we were going to do a third, an addition to this house, a remodel to this house. Their initial ideas was to put a second story on this to capture views into the rear yard as well as mountain views. They loved the architectural style of part of the house. My next slide shows something else. They would like to maintain that. They wanted a pool from the beginning. They are very active people. They love the Santa Barbara climate and they love the location to the beach in the village. And they, with the cabana, they also, with the pool, they also wanted to have a cabana for changing and things like that. The projection to the left of that picture represents a board and bath addition that was done sometime in the past, and it is of substandard construction, needs to be removed. So that was part of a remodel area that we were, knew that we would address. The area of the recessed area where that patio, the brick patio is, is where the clients wanted to create more of an open plan. This house doesn't really have a living room, so they wanted to create a living room in that space. The magnolia that you see in the corner, we are planning to save and relocate, and Sam Mafus, the landscape architect, will discuss that. So this, and I'm going to go quickly through these. This is the first design that Board of Architectural Review saw two years ago. We started this process in July of 2010. You see that we were proposing a second story closer to the south side of the property, a deck and some stairs going to the backyard, the elevations. This represents a height of 27 feet 5 inches, where the zoning allows for a 35-foot height restriction. We were proposing large plate heights. We were trying to maintain the existing dining room at 11 feet and putting the second story on top of that with a 10-foot plate height. And the cabana, we initially were proposing to come in with an 800-square-foot gross cabana. Now I'd like to, as you can see, I've dated, I've stated all the dates that we went in front of the Board of Architectural Review. We went in front of the board six times. Each time, we feel that we addressed neighbors' concerns, we made reductions, we made alterations, we've increased landscaping. So from the first meeting, which the Berkholtz, which are the neighbors to the north, were present, he was concerned with his privacy, his views, what he would be looking at as a second story, concerned about the deck and the staircase. So the next meeting, we removed the stairs, we removed the deck, we reduced the plate height by two feet. The next meeting, we came back, was on October 31st. We then reduced the cabana from 800 square feet gross to 600, a reduction of 33%. We removed some chimneys, some massing that they were concerned about. Deborah Hurst was at that second meeting on March 28th, and she was, now we're concerned with the southern neighbor about privacy. Her open yard space happens to be on the north side of her property, so the second story was a concern of hers. We reduced window sizes, made opaque windows. On March 20, on March 5th, when we went to the board, we shifted the second story over two feet. We reduced some balconies, which was a concern of the Hursts. And we also added some square footage to the first floor. When we made the shift over, it made us reevaluate where the staircase would go to the second floor, which affected the first floor, which then made us evaluate these two first-floor bedrooms. But at that board, what I've highlighted and read is that the Board of Architectural Review acknowledges that this is a neighborhood in transition. They also were complimentary about how the lengths and the changes that we've made along the way at these different board meetings. They also suggested that we change one gable roof in the front, the front elevation of the two-story, and change that to a hip. And almost gave us the feeling that if you did this, we would approve it at the next meeting, and even stated in their minutes that the project can return for preliminary and final review. So then we come back on the 26th with a gabled roof on the front. We reduced the cabana again from 600 square feet to now 435 square feet gross, another reduction of 38%. And at that meeting, the, Mrs. Hurst's representative from DUDAC, as well as more concerns about privacy was what we were hearing from the beginning from Mrs. Hurst. So I recommended to my client that he come down from Canada and we meet with the neighbors privately, not in front of the board. Let's try and hash this out before it goes back to the committee, because it seemed like there was so much time going on between this, and we really were trying to meet neighbors' concerns. So on April 7th, we met with neighbors, and the neighbors that showed up were the Berkholtz, the neighbors to the north. We invited the Hurst, as my client John Offit mentioned. We had a representative from the Monacito Association, we had Martha Siegel there. We also had Jamie Brown, who stated that she was kind of the representative for the Middle Road Association. I don't know if it was an official committee or whatever. At that meeting, I'm sorry, I have to take a step back. On the 26th meeting of MBAR, they suggested three options. Go to a single story, or if you're going to keep it a second story, make it be within the roof line and shift it to the center of the building. We did that. That's, I had a new design for the April 7th meeting with the neighbors. It was in the center of the building. It was in roof lines. It was lower in height. And the neighbors basically said, "We are adamant that this house should not have a second story." Jamie Brown even mentioned that, "If you take this down to a single story, you're not going to hear from me again. This house needs to be a single story, and if you could do it, we'd greatly appreciate it." So now we're back in front of the Board of Architectural Review on May 7th, and that's the date that we received preliminary approval. The board was concerned about the height of the clear story in the center of the design, which is a large, which is a living room. We are 157 square feet over guidelines at that point, or 6%. We reduced the pool, which was one of the concerns of noise for the neighbor to the south, Mrs. Hurst. We shifted the pool two feet further north away from her. Sam Mafus will address. There was additional landscaping brought in. I showed on the landscape plan that we were going to enclose the pool equipment. We moved it instead of five feet from the property lines, nine feet away from the property lines, attached it to the back of the cabana. We wrote on the plans that we will put in a whisper-flow pump, one of the quietest pumps that you can get, so that the noise would even be reduced further. So now I am here in front of the Commissioner, well, Commissioner, and since the last MBAR meeting that we did get preliminary approval on, my client and I discussed, how could we even listen to the neighbor's concerns again? And how can we improve this more without disrupting or changing his needs as a floor plan, his needs as room sizes? So I looked at it, and we could reduce another 78 square feet and still make this house function the way they needed it. So what I've shown, highlighted with the clouds is, we are here today to show that we are reducing this by another 3%, or half the guidelines were cut of the 157, so 3%. We are moving, you see on the lower side, the cloud with the bay window, we pushed that whole facade six inches further away from Mrs. Hurst. On the opposite side, six inches further down from the Berkholtz. And the two clouds that face the backyard, we reduced that. So that all added up to the reduction of some of that square footage. This is the current design. We've actually reduced, we took what MBAR suggested, the clear story that you see in the center on the west elevation, reduced that plate height by one foot. So instead of 19-2, we're now to 18-2. Now I want to just briefly discuss about neighborhood compatibility. You'll see on here, the pink represents projects that are over guidelines. If you look at, on the bottom of the sheet, 733 Oak Road is 11% over guidelines. That was approved as, with a revision in '06. The original permit went in effect in '04. You look, you see the project, you see Mrs. Hurst, she's at 341. The project site is at 245. We are now at 3% over guidelines. We, you look to the next project up, which is the Berkholtz, who have been and showed up to every MBAR meeting but are not here today. They are 7%. They went in 2006 and added 1,200 square feet to their house. They had about 1,150 square-foot bungalow. They added 1,250 square feet. About 400 of that was a second story. They added a two-car garage in the back of 440 square feet, attached to that, a workshop of 200 square feet. So they have an accessory structure as well in the rear of their yard. The green dots represent two stories, I'm sorry, the blue inside the pink represents the two stories on that side of the street, and the green dots represent multiple accessory structures onsite. So if you look at, I believe it's 275, I could be confused between that and 283, there's actually two houses on there. One's considered a guest house and then the original house. They're very small in size, but they have multiple accessory structures in it. If you look at the very, one on top there where, I think it was an addition, I don't know the year it was done, but that's 33% over guidelines. It's a large two-story Mediterranean home. I'm going to leave that to Sam. But in closing, I would like to just state that we feel that we have really listened to the neighbors and the Board of Architectural Review. We've made alterations, reductions in square footage in, from a single story, from a two-story to a single story. We've reduced pool size, we've reduced, we've moved pool size. We've listened to their concern about noise and enclosing the pool equipment. We have, we have mitigated Mrs. Hurst's concern of privacy because we went from a second story to a two-story. We feel that those clear story windows in the current design will not have any impact on them. It only lets in light. Those are probably 12 feet off the ground. No one can visually look out of those windows. We are asking you to deny the appeal today, and we hope, we feel that our client has the right to make these improvements, and this project will be used as a single-family residence only. Any questions?
Any questions from the Commissioner? Mr. Overall, please.
Ms. Calvin, good morning, or maybe it's afternoon by now, I don't know. I have a question related to the, actually, two questions. But one is the elevation from the south in your revised plan with reducing the height. I'll just offer an opinion. If I were the neighbor to the south and I could see this at all, I actually think the height being taller and having it, this reads an awful lot from ground level and often like a continuous roof of some considerable magnitude. And I think it looked, my personal opinion is, I think it looked better with the clear story showing. But if you can live with it, I mean, I guess we can't. But I do have a question whether it's as functional as your, as your client would like it to have with the reduced height.
We did have to reduce the clear story windows to meet this with that one-foot reduction, but in, I forgot to mention, I'm sorry, the two wings on either side that you see on the west elevation, we were proposing that in front of MBAR at 10 feet. We've now reduced those to nine feet. We needed to do that to still have functioning, functionable windows, clear story windows with the reduction of that clear story height from 19-2 to 18-2. And to create adequate crickets to drain those roofs between.
Then the other question, on, there were two additional attachments that you didn't get to in here that depict the pool in color and the...
Oh, these last three slides, Sam Mafus is the landscape architect, he's going to come up and discuss those.
In that case, I'll defer my question until he gets up there, so, thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Further questions? Discuss, Daniel, please.
Hi, Sophie. Can you tell me, in this photograph, which is Ms. Hurst's, 241, it appears as though her house is a two-story?
I believe there's a tower. I don't know what that is, but I believe it's a tower element.
Okay, fine, thank you. You just didn't, it wasn't listed and I didn't know.
I wouldn't technically call that second story if it's not habitable, so I'm calling it a tower. There is a two-story element to this.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Yeah, you wouldn't know that necessarily. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? If not, thank you so very much, and we will now move to the landscape. Architect, please.
Thanks, Sophie. Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm Sam Mafus. I've been involved with the project from very early on, and I'm here to represent the changes, and I'll try to get oriented to the site plan and the landscape plan that we have made to the site through this extensive review, through the design review process. I want to ask Brian, do you have a pointer, a laser pointer? Is that it? Excuse me. Perfect. So this is the original site plan that related to the two-story. It shows the backyard, the cabana, as Sophie has mentioned, was at a configuration of 800 square feet. Shows the back patio, the pool, the equipment, kind of in the back northwest corner. John's family is very active, so the pool is of a health need. The active backyard is, in this plan and throughout all these plans, very open-jointed, very permeable. There's brick patios in the front that exist now that will remain. They're quite historic and natural and quite beautiful to this architecture, so the repeat of that element is repeated in this area and all of the configurations I'll show you. This is all permeable brick paving. We have planters adjacent to it. The extensive screening in this early version was a continuation of a pitasporum hedge that's on the northern neighbor that comes to here. We will continue and have always proposed to have additional pitasporum to come up to what has been agreed to with the northern neighbor of about a 12-foot height, between 10-foot and 12-foot, is about what both properties would enjoy the privacy. We've also transplanted the magnolia tree that was in one of the photos at the back of the house in key places on these evolving plans, in spots that will help with upper dormer windows for also relating to the privacy of the neighbors. This plan, again, shows the extent of the backyard, but the privacy has also been respected with additional screening all along the south. That is created with full-size fruit trees, orange trees, lemon trees, that will be in the area by this patio, as well as continuation of added pitasporum hedge for complete privacy for both neighbors. That was done in the first rendition. Listening to the neighbors and going through the comprehensive MBAR critique, we then modified that plan to shrink the cabana. And the pool is in the same configuration. It was also kept close to the same size, but it was reduced. The pool equipment is in the same position. But always throughout, the privacy was of utmost scrutiny on me professionally to make sure that these properties had privacy from the two-story to the north and certainly from the southern property, looking at any backyard activities. So we... So, we closed it off completely in terms of thickening and double-thickening screening. So, that was a middle compromise that we pursued. We also have addressed beautifying and trying to enhance certain conditions at Oak Road by adding trees. We work with the Public Works Department to make sure those trees are far enough back, respecting walking along Oak Road, so we're not encroaching in any way on a pedestrian way to the side of the paved part of Oak Road. Now, the last version, which is our current version, shows the single story. So, this shows you the cooperation and the compromise and all the different efforts that the landscape and site plan has gone through to listen to and abide by the conditions of this particular neighborhood. Again, the pool was reduced. You can see the pool now is 12 feet by about 36 feet. This allows for a minimal lap, but it's, again, a health-type active family, so this is a minimum-sized pool we feel that Mr. Offit can live with. The cabana being shrunk, as you know. The pool cabin, or the pool equipment is being pushed in, and as Sophie's mentioned, all the cutting-edge technology in terms of sound is being utilized. We've utilized the magnolia tree again in this position, and by no means, I think Claire, Commissioner Gossdenger, you looked at this area as a patio. The only real patios are in this area, which will be a combination of brick, and then it'll adapt to an open-jointed flagstone to allow for some open area in the west of the house. This is all open-jointed flagstone. So, again, the backyard is going to appear very green and be very useful in terms of landscape and overall relaxation. There is extensive planting on this side, as I mentioned, that will be very dense on this side. We continue to have the same conditions throughout. So, one of the things I wanted to also mention, that a number of neighbors, three in particular on Oak Road, have submitted letters of support. They either have regular conditions, as we do, of a backyard to be utilized in this way, or they do have pools. And that, I think I've concluded most of the content of what the landscape and site plan. I'm here for answering any questions you might have.
Any questions from the Commission? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now move on to, is there any further, anything else from the applicant at this time? If not, we will move on to site visit disclosures by the Commission. Begin, Ms. Gossdenger, please.
I did drive by.
I wasn't on the property, but I spent a lot of time in the neighborhood and adjoining streets.
Thank you. Mr. Idelson?
Yeah, I visited the neighborhood and walked by and looked at the various houses.
Mr. Overall, please.
Again, I didn't go on the property, but I did drive the neighborhood, and I did look at it again as recently as this morning. Additionally, I had an extended conversation with one of the members of the, of MBAR. As we all know, you read the minutes from those meetings, and you don't always necessarily get the flavor of it. So, I had a conversation and got some of the sense of how it proceeded fleshed out in that, so, back.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to public comment. We have two requests to speak. Sandy Stahl, please, followed by Victoria Green.
I've attended, I believe, all the meetings of MBAR regarding this project. And, sort of to follow up on the child analogy, it kind of reminds me of when your kids come to you and they ask you for something, and you go no, and then they come back and they ask you again, and you say no. And they just keep coming back and coming back and coming back, and finally, you just kind of throw up your hands and give up, and you just let something happen. And that's kind of what happened at MBAR. If you go back to that April 7 meeting, they had actually voted to deny this project because of the bulk size and scale of it. And then, they sort of relented and asked Sophie if she would rather have them deny it, or if she wanted one chance to go back to her client and try to redo it. So, I'm not sure exactly how your minutes read, but at the time, that was the feeling of the MBAR, that this was not a project that they could really live with. And even in the drawing that Sophie just put up on the screen, where she showed in the little clouds what they were doing, she was saying, "Well, we've given up six inches here, and we've given up six inches there." And, yes, they've made a tremendous amount of changes, but they've all been little and in a lot of cases, sort of insignificant. The noise from the pool was the issue from the neighbors, and it wasn't the noise of the equipment, it was the noise of people splashing using the pool, and making two feet bigger or smaller doesn't really have an impact on that. It's just a really, really big project for a quarter of an acre, and I think it's really easy to forget the size of the lot when you're looking at everything just up on the screen. But, those are very long, narrow, close-together parcels on that street. I've also been asked by Sally Bromfield to please read her comments to you regarding this project. As, "Dear Commissioners, as a former member of the Montecito General Plan Committee that developed the Montecito General Plan, I'm writing to express my concern that the accessory building additions that the owner of 245 Oak Road is requesting do not meet the FAR guidelines as established by the Montecito General Plan and Architectural Guidelines to promote neighborhood compatibility. The proposed accessory structures are at a scale that is incompatible with the surrounding homes. It is important that you pay attention to this issue because bad precedents will be set if you permit this overdevelopment of a quarter-acre lot. If our Montecito Planning Commission cannot be relied upon to enforce the established building codes of our community, Montecito's treasured semi-rural environment will be forever changed, and we will look like all the other overdeveloped South Coast communities. That is not what the people who have chosen to live here want to happen. Given this project's incompatible scale of development, you must ask the applicant to scale back his proposed plans and grant the appeal. I would also like to request that you add a paragraph to the Montecito Architecture Guidelines stating that accessory building square footage be counted when evaluating a property's overall square footage. This is an oversight that should not continue. Thank you for your consideration, Sally Bromfield." I think Sally and I both feel that it's, it's very, it changes your perspective of what's going on with a project when you don't count the garage, you don't count the covered patio, you don't count the cabana as actual structure on the parcel. And so, we're hoping that this committee will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We now have Victoria Green, please, on behalf of the Montecito Association.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The Montecito Association has followed this project as it's worked its way through the Montecito Board of Architectural Review, and we've had presentations from the appellants as well at our land use committee and some discussion at our board meeting. And you should be in receipt of our letter of July 12 commenting on the project. And I think that we elected to comment on this project, on this appeal, because it raises an issue that's of broad concern to the community. And that's how MBAR takes into consideration the total development on a site as it considers neighborhood compatibility. I think that the community plan and the architectural guidelines are clear that that's the intent, that the full scale of development should be taken into consideration. I think where that gets lost sometimes at MBAR is in their focus on the floor area guidelines, which really are only applicable to the main structure or the residence. So, MBAR focuses on those numbers and seeking, you know, compliance with those or something close to that, and maybe loses sight of how the accessory structures affect neighborhood compatibility. I think there's a tension between the allowances in the zoning ordinance for those accessory structures on a somewhat unlimited basis, regardless of lot size, that pushes against that neighborhood compatibility question. So, what we think it's important for MBAR to understand is that they do have the guidance in place in the architectural guidelines that let them look at that full scale of development on a site relative to neighborhood compatibility and where appropriate, scale back those accessory structures, or limit a house to something less than what the guidelines might specify where accessory structures are also proposed. Or, in some cases, not allow the accessory structures because the ordinance says that you may allow. They're not entitled to provide a reasonable use of a property. So, with that said, I think the feeling of our land use committee and our Board of Directors was that the development proposed on this site was somewhat beyond what is compatible with the existing surrounding neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions? If not, is there anything else from the appellate, the applicant, or the public, staff? Ms. Black, please.
Madam Chair, it looks like the appellant wants to make a few closing remarks, and then you might ask if the applicant wants to as well.
Jonathan Leach, once again, representing Deborah Hurst, the appellant. I completely agree with Victoria's summary that the association and the community is very concerned about some oversight that currently exists. And the oversight that I would like to point out is the fact that the cabana, which cannot be distinguished from a size restriction or an appearance restriction, is allowed whenever you have a sport court or a pool, whereas the guest house, which has the same exact limitations, is restricted on parcels of less than two acres in size. That makes sense to me, and I would encourage your commission, you know, in your abundant spare time, to consider the possibility of an ordinance amendment in the future that would apply the same restriction to a cabana that currently exists for a guest house. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anything else, please? Yes, please. Ms. Calvin.
Brian, can you bring back your site plan, or is that gone? Thank you. I just wanted to add a couple more comments regarding, oh, is that the one? Sorry, that one, okay. It's interesting on the site plan that you see the neighbor to the north, the Bertholds, they go from their development, which was the front little cottage in the front where the word "area" of single-story is, all the way back to their footprint. And then, there's just a little separation of a motor court between that and their two-car garage, which sits in their rear yard setback with a workshop. And you compare that to our development. Our development in footprint has grown because we went from a second story to a single story. So, we did reduce open yard space in the back. That was not our intention. Our intention was to have a second-story house, which the neighbor to the north has. Also, you could see the Hurst footprint of their house, too. I mean, she has a motor court in the front, and the front of her house is pretty much the front of the dining room on this, and her development goes way further back and goes to about the middle of the pool of what we're developing in usable outdoor open space. So, I just want to state that it's sounding like, from the two neighbors on both sides, that this is a situation that, especially the neighbor to the north, he was able to do a second story. He was able to add 1,200 square foot. He was able to add an accessory structure with a garage. He didn't even have to present landscape plans in front of the Board of Architectural Review. It wasn't required at that time. So, this project is scrutinized to a higher level, and it's almost as if the neighbors are saying, "Okay, that happened, but we don't want it now in our backyard again." And the, I feel like if the board was to deny a pool because of ambient noise, not pool equipment noise, is setting a precedence. I think the board would also be setting a precedence if they were to say, "This cabana is overdevelopment." We went from 800 down to 400 because of listening to what the neighbors' concerns were. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If there are no further com, yes, please, Ms. Stahl.
Very quickly.
Please.
Brian, can you go back to that one chart that you just had?
I just think it's really important to note that what exactly our fears, or my fear, I've lived in Montecito for 30 years, and this is exactly what's happening. They're taking every other instance where overdevelopment has occurred and used it as a rationale for even more overdevelopment. And I think that that's really...
Thank you, Ms. Stahl. I've been advised by staff that we generally don't allow rebuttals on that, but thank you so much.
Madam Chair, just...
Ms. Black, please.
Just so that we're following our normal procedure. Typically, what we do after public comment is we allow the appellant to provide any closing comments and the applicant, and then we don't go back to public comment again. So, you may just want to provide another round of appellant-applicant rebuttal because you've allowed somebody else to speak and then close the public hearing and go into your questions and deliberations.
Thank you so much for that clarification. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? If not, we will close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for discussion and action.
Madam Chair, I've been on this commission since the beginning. This is the most remarkable hearing I've seen, and is it 10 years now or 11? This is a cautionary tale. The applicant's patience, I think, has been overwhelming. The square footage is not unusually above many, many projects we've approved. The height limitation is below the maximum height. The cabana size is below the cabana size that we have, that we call out to not exceed. What we're hearing is an impatience with the community plan, and that may well be. But, there needs to be certainty. People need to be able to buy property and look at what's been approved, look at our ordinances, look at our community plan, look at our regulations, and rely on it. This tells people that if they're not very well-heeled and prepared for a two-year fight, which I'm sure the cost has been extraordinary, you better not come here. Some of this tension is good. This is why we're here. This is what communities are about. You can't do anything you like, but when you're proposing things that this commission's approved before, the MBAR has approved before, for this to drag on so long is quite amazing to me. I'm going to deny this appeal. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Overall, please.
I would echo a good bit of what Commissioner Phillips just said. I think, in particular, there are a couple of things that bother me. If we want to change the guidelines, we want to change the ordinances, that's something that the Montecito Association can put forth as something they'd like to see us consider and have PND review, and I think that's just fine. But, in the absence of that, I think we would be acting arbitrarily to do something that's out of keeping with things that, as Commissioner Phillips said, that we've done on many occasions. I would say one thing to the applicant, I'll make my point again. I would like to see you take the roof height back up and increase the size of those windows. I think you'd have a more livable house. That's up to you to decide when you go back to MBAR. I found objectionable, the assertion of what this owner might or might do in terms of the vacation rental and those things, I just, it feels like it's kind of an abuse of the process when you bring those things in.
Any further comment? If not, do we have a motion? Commissioner Overall? Commissioner Gossdenger, please.
I will move, yeah, I will take, move staff's recommendation to deny the appeal, make the required findings, determine the project exempt from CEQA, and approve case number
I second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We will now take a 10-minute break before beginning the special events ordinance review. We will reconvene the July 25 meeting of the Montecito Planning Commission and move on to number three. Would we please read that into the record? David, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Planning and Development Department at the Montecito Planning Commission. A, adopt a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt an ordinance, case number 12ORD3, that they adopt a recommendation to the County Planning Commission, that they recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt an ordinance, case number 12ORD4, and to determine the project is exempt from Section 15061B3 of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. We have a number of speaker slips on this. If you would like to speak to this issue, please fill out a speaker slip, which can be found on the back cabinet. We will now move to Mr. Lengel, please, for staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Montecito Planning Commission. Just by way of a brief background on the subject matter, the regulations regarding allowance for temporary uses, or also known as special events, were added to the, then the zoning ordinances, Articles 2, 3, and 4 in 2004. Previous to that point in time, the articles really did not, did not address the use of residential and agricultural properties for special events such as political fundraisers or charitable fundraisers. And so, in response to a number of questions that were occurring from different property owners as to what they were allowed to do, we did add the regulations in to the articles. As adopted in the current Montecito Land Use and Development Code, which, as we all remember, flowed from Article 4 primarily, charitable and other non-commercial events are exempt from permits, provided that there's only three of them per year, and that you have 300 or fewer attendees, and that the owner or tenant receives no compensation or immuneration in exchange for hosting the event on their property. The ordinance also provides that commercial events, for example, where your property, where you rent your property for the purpose of holding a wedding, is considered to be a reception facility and thus does require a conditional use permit to be obtained before you may use it for that purpose. The purpose of the conditional use permit is to develop conditions of approval that address compatibility with your surrounding neighbors that would examine things like noise, traffic, other issues that might prove to be a nuisance to your neighbors from the holding of the event. However, to avoid having to obtain the conditional use permit, owners rent the entire property on a short-term basis for the primary purpose of holding an event, and then claim that since the renter does not receive any compensation for holding their event, such as a wedding party, et cetera, it's therefore considered non-commercial and exempt from permits. The ordinance package that was presented to your commission and the County Planning Commission and...
I think we have a question. Commissioner Overall, please.
Mr. Lengel, would you like questions as we go through this, or you want to go through the whole thing first?
I'd rather you, I think I'd rather you ask them during, so that you're not then mulling that over.
Okay, then I have my first question, well, my first two questions for you. On the first, the background, the number 300, was there any particular reason that number was selected? Or was it a best guess attempt to put something in writing?
My recollection, since I was the one that wrote it, was that I had done some amount of research of other jurisdictions to see what kind of thresholds they had used for what would be considered a reasonable number of people to have for an event. And I think the consensus was that the 300 would, would provide for most of the events that we are seeing occurring already, primarily charitable fundraisers, and that, that was seen to be an acceptable upward, or upper limit on the number of attendees.
Then my, my second question, I'll make it as a statement, and you can either confirm or deny. On the second page, when you talk about to avoid the CUP and the claim that they don't get compensation, am I correct that that is the problem we're trying to solve?
In a nutshell, yes, that is the problem.
Thank you.
And sir, I have a question as well. You mentioned short-term event. How are we defining that?
Actually, I believe the term is short-term rental, Madam Chair.
Okay, I wrote the other wrong word. Okay.
And we'll get into that a little more in detail further along, but just so...
We'll wait. That's fine.
But no, just very briefly, a short-term rental, we're defining as the rental of a piece of property for 30 days or less.
Okay. Thank you.
In the 2011 ordinance amendment package that we presented to both yours and the County Planning Commission, we did attempt to address the problem of people skirting the need for the conditional use permit by renting the entire property. And so, we tried to specify within those ordinance amendments what events qualified as exempt charitable and other non-commercial events versus those, the events that were commercial in nature and should get the conditional use permit. There was a number of, there's a large amount of public testimony in response to these proposed amendments regarding the impact of the amendments, if adopted as presented, on the local special events industry and, and the ability for people to host events on their property. And so, in response to the testimony, the commissions directed this department to work with representatives of both the special events industry, industry and neighborhood associations to try and craft amendments that would be more amenable and would satisfy both purposes. So we did meet with a working group that we formed, composed of representatives from both neighborhood associations and special events industries, including permit planners, location services, things of that nature. The conclusions of the group meetings were that we should maintain the existing tiered permit system, but that we should also develop an application package specifically tailored to special events so that it would be more easily understood by a person as to what they needed to provide in order to obtain a permit for a special event. Also, the conclusion was, we should return to the commissions with amendments that specified that a CUP is required for, for commercial events, and to also create a simplified permit process for commercial events that would occur only once within a year. So we're here with the new amendments. The major areas that we'll be discussing with your commission in regards to the proposed amendments are in regards to a new public, not public, a new purpose and intent statement that we're including regarding what constitutes charitable and non-commercial events. The applicability of regulations to small, to small charitable and non-commercial events where the number of people is restricted to 50 or fewer. Proposed additional standards for both commercial and charitable, non-commercial events, as well as discussing the new special use event, special event use permit process, which is the simplified permit process we're proposing. We did have a meeting with the working group this last Monday in regards to this meeting today and the staff report and ordinances. There are a number of revisions that grew out of that meeting, and so these are shown on the screen in the yellow italicized script, just so they stand out. I just wanted to put these on the screen so that both you and the audience know that there are certain revisions that we're proposing to the ordinances that are different than what's in the published version that's online. But one of the proposed amendments is that to specify that the regulations regarding charitable and non-commercial events apply not only to the whole of the property, but also to any use of a portion of the property, including any structures located on that property. And the, the change that we've included here is to, through a direct statement, provide that these events include private gatherings of family and friends that you would host on your own lot, a dinner party, your own wedding, things of that nature. Also, as I mentioned earlier, we are proposing to add a new purpose and intent section. This purpose and intent would specify that charitable and non-commercial events are allowed as a use that is accessory to the residential use of the property, that the purpose and intent is not to allow events that are associated with the short-term rentals as charitable or other non-commercial events, and that the short-term rental is the rental or use of a property for 30 days or less, including rentals that are subject to the transient occupancy tax. And so, this is the whole of the purpose and intent statement. You'll see at the bottom, there are cer, there's a phrase there that we've deleted or proposed to be deleted, that says that unless, let me back up. The last sentence of the purpose and intent statement says that additionally, the intent of this section is to not allow events associated with the short-term rental of property as charitable, as charitable or other non-commercial events. And then previously, it would have said, unless a subsection does not apply to such events in compliance with another referred subsection. The subsection it referred to was that, the applicability section, which says that the regulations only apply to events where you have more than 50 people. We felt that it was, that we should delete this last sentence from this particular paragraph because we didn't want to confuse the permit requirements for charitable and other non-commercial events versus those that were associated with a short-term rental of property. This is the sub-paragraph to the purpose and intent statement, and it provides that what constitutes a short-term rental of property, and as I previously mentioned, it's for a period of 30 days or less, and includes rentals that are subject to the payment of the transient occupancy tax.
Mr. Lengel, so I don't get too lost and confused here. Back up to the proposed amendment starts with a, the previous page, okay. I'm trying to make sure I'm clear what you're talking about. It said that private gatherings of family, friends, provided the property is used in compliance with the, the following permit requirements and development standards. Since I don't have those immediately in front of me, I, I'm having a little trouble figuring out, what does this apply to? This is any size event?
Commissioner Overall and members of the commission, yes. This, this would essentially apply to any charitable or non-commercial event that's being held on a piece of, a residentially-zoned property or agriculturally-zoned property where the number of people exceeds 50, up to a maximum of 300.
This is over 50 and less than 300.
Just 300.
Correct? Okay. And the following permit requirements, where do I find those?
This is, actually, Ms. Petrovich has pointed out this little conundrum in that for these type of events within Montecito, there are no permit requirements, per se, because these are exempt, they're determined to be exempt, provided you are restricted to three times per year and no more than 300 people. However, it does refer also to development standards that would apply to these types of permits. So one thing we might want to do is actually delete the reference to the permit requirements and just leave it at development standards.
Please go ahead.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, if you look at attachment C, Mr. Lengel provided you with an updated version. If you look at attachment C, page 11, you'll see the purpose and intense language with the strike through. And then, C, B is an applicability section, and C is the permit and development standard section.
You said page 11?
Page 11, and then it goes on to page 12. So that's kind of where we're at in the ordinance, if you're trying to find the context.
So this doesn't apply to B1, right? And B1 says, is that where we are, does not apply to amusement or filming activities? Okay, correct. Are we all on that? Okay, we're good.
And, and so, so if there are any more questions on this, I'd just like to reiterate that the purpose of including this purpose and intent statement in the ordinance is to make it crystal clear as to what we're talking about, as to what is allowed as a commercial, I'm sorry, as a non-commercial or charitable event, and what a commercial event would require as far as permitting goes.
A thought, since I had the question and I couldn't follow it, does it make sense to include somewhere, and I can't, unfortunately, the light, I can't read this very well, does it make sense to include the definition...
A little bit more light.
Of, you know, 50 to 300 and three times a year, so that people are absolutely clear what this is applying to?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, that follows further on in that section regarding the standards for charitable events or non-commercial events, that you're subject to those three times-per-year limits and, and the maximum number of attendees. And I'm trying to find it for you quickly. So on... Yeah. Right. So Madam Chair and Commissioners, if you look at the bottom of page 11, where it talks about permit requirements and development standards, and then you go to the top of the next page, it says there's a short table that talks about the maximum number of events, the number of people allowed, and then the permit requirements, which in this case would be an exempt permit, exempt from permits.
Ms. Robinson, please.
Yeah, I have a question. You know, it's, I'm thinking this is going to get pretty complicated for the average person, and I'm wondering about the user-friendly nature of something that we need at least oversight. Otherwise, people are going to feel they're going to have to come into the county desk and have it evaluated what they want to do. And I don't think that's the ideal way to do things. So, what, what can, can you help me out with that?
Madam Chair and members of the commission, this, this has not been an easy ordinance to write because it, because of what we're trying to do as far as regulating certain events, but providing exemptions for other events. And frankly, I've not found an easier way to, to cover the subject matter within the framework of how the ordinance is structured. So we, we can develop additional materials as a handouts to help people in determining what, what kind of permit they may or may not need. what kind of permit they may or may not need.
Sir, you -- oh, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, if I could just make a further comment. This isn't even the entire complexity of permitting special events, because as I think your commission's aware, lots of other departments are involved with permitting events, even some departments for events that the Planning and Development Department doesn't permit. So, the Board of Supervisors did, through the Office of the CEO, set up a special event committee for certain departments to participate in, and I believe that the CEO and the Community Services Director are working on a webpage to try and help people navigate through this process. So, it is complex, and we can certainly look at ways to make it a little bit clearer and simpler, but there are other efforts underway to try and help people sort through the various permit processes, you know, with public health and fire and other departments as well.
Might it -- oh, please go ahead.
I think what we're going to run into, if we don't have it so it's pretty straightforward and simplified, a lot of people avoid the process, and they'll just do what they want to do and won't pay attention to it. And so, it'll have to be enforceable, and then enforcing it gets to be an ugly thing because it's not appreciated. Okay.
Might it be better if we could review this when it's in a more final form? Like, for example, we were just directed to page 11, and I know --